Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at being Tuesday, February 6th. It's 6:06 in the evening. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Sub move.
Second. By Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Danny, he cannot make it this evening due to some work requirements. He's got a big case, so he senses regrets. And Sean also had a last-minute work emergency, but he will be along momentarily. So he should be here very shortly. Are there any walk-ins this evening?
Yes.
Chief Stewart, would you like to come forward?
Yes. We've recently had two promotions, and I'd like to introduce them to you.
Absolutely.
Come on up, gentlemen. You know, the last couple of months have been pretty busy, and I wanted to make sure that the board stays in touch with retirement and the two recent promotions that we've had. So Lieutenant Paul Norton, he was appointed to patrolman in 1997. He was promoted to sergeant in 2006. He was appointed detective sergeant in 2013, and he was promoted lieutenant detective January 8th, that following retirement.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Norton will be in charge of all the specialist functions, including detectives and prosecutions, but even beyond that, K-9, reen unit, social services, animal control, all that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sergeant Eric Steadman. He was appointed patrolman in...
2002?
2002. We were kicking that around today. In 2002. He was appointed detective in 2013, and he was promoted to detective sergeant in October of 2017. Sergeant Steadman is in charge of detectives, including prosecutions. He runs the day-to-day operations of the detectives. The detective's function right now has changed significantly from even back when I first became a detective. And the need for constant supervision with detective functions, never does your investigation stay within the confines of Situate. It always involves going to another jurisdiction. It involves many fluid situations, and you have to have people in those positions to make decisions, and good decisions for your department. And people who can work well with other departments are respected, and they know that they're professional. So these guys have great relationships with all the surrounding towns. They're well-respected, and they've made nothing but great decisions since they've been appointed and promoted into specialist roles.
Excellent. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're proud of you, and we're grateful for all the dedication that you've given to Situate. It's a great force, and you have a great team. Everyone sitting here in the front, as well as all those that you serve alongside. So did you have to beat anybody out for these positions, or were they...
Yes, they're assessment centers. And at the sergeant level, there's an exam and an assessment center.
Excellent.
At the lieutenant's level, it's a pretty rigid assessment center.
There you go.
So it's, you know, the times have changed a little bit. While it's still under civil service, we avoid the civil service exam as the sole determining factor in promotions. So the assessment center is, as anybody who's gone through one will tell you, that it's pretty grueling, and it's very stressful, and, you know, but it's a better indicator of your knowledge, skills, and abilities to be promoted to sergeant, lieutenant, deputy, and chief. So that, you know, that's going to stick around for a while.
That's great, and we appreciate you continually to train everyone so the troops can rise up through the ranks. I think it creates a great camaraderie throughout the department. So congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Congratulations. You are well-served with this team.
Like many people on the department now that Situate born and raised, and it's just pretty cool when you...
No hiding from you guys.
Last thing I was going to say, you get two great choices. You know, I see you guys all around town, have for the last decade. You know, the citizens, you know, the kids, you know, the town like the back of your hand, and you serve the community well. You're at all the events. You know, like I can't say enough about seeing you guys around and the service you've given to the town. So great choices, and, you know, obviously, it's a tough process to go through just amongst itself, let alone working on the fours for 15, 20 years. So thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Said it. Congratulations. Thanks, Chief. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the report of the town administrator. Jim?
Couple things real quick, just to bring the board up to speed. The building committee met last week, and they recommended an owner's project manager for the council on aging. Vertex out of Waymouth, they were the OPM on the public safety complex. I think they were very happy with the work they did on that, so they're going to be talking to me about getting that project underway with the council on aging. Just to answer the question that's come up is, why do we hire the OPM before we hire the architect? The simple answer is it's required by law. Mass General Law, Chapter 149, Section 44A and 1/2, requires you to hire an owner's project manager on projects in excess of $1.5 million prior to getting an architect or any other design services. So that's why we hire the OPM first. You bring him on board, now the OPM will help the town go through the selection process for the architect. So that answers that question. Last week...
When will I start, Jim?
I have to get the contract done. We need to come up with a scope of services, so I think the board has to have some discussions about where on that site we want to look to put the senior son, and what else is going to go up there, so that we can get them on board and then get the architect for the scope of services. That's correct, so.
Okay.
But I should have that wrapped up hopefully by your next meeting. I'll have that contract ready to go. We had our first coffee last week down at Lucky Fin. Thank the Lucky Fin for having us. I thought it was very successful. I know Chief Stewart thought it went pretty well. Kevin Cafferty was thrilled. Someone came in and asked questions about water, and chemicals, and fluoride, and he was just thrilled that someone wanted to know about that sort of stuff. So we thought it went very well. I think it was very well received, so we're going to do it again at the end of this month. We're looking kind of in the North Situate area to move it around a little bit. But started off well, and we hope it builds from here, so we'll keep doing that. The last thing I want to say is I want to thank Carlene Quinn from Situate, Ohio, came over the other day. I seen her be popular with the journalism class over there. She came over, and she's doing a story on the community center, and what's going on down there, and what we're using it for. So at this point, I think we'll let us move on and go on to the next thing on the agenda.
Well, thank you for being so available to the students and to the citizens. I think it's very nice, helpful. All right. Next is just a discussion and vote for donations to the Commission on Disabilities. We had some nice donations in honor of a special ed teacher by the name of Frances Jacobs, and we just need to formally accept them.
Move the Board's Selectmen to accept the donation in memory of Frances Jacobs in the amount of $85 to the Community on Disabilities.
Second. Move by Ms. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that's the only one there. Great. That's very nice. We received a couple of them, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yes, for a total of 85 so far. Yeah, okay. Yes, I saw a few thank-you notes that went out.
Jean Banton and Anne White.
Very nice. Okay. All right, next is a discussion and vote. Kathy Curran with regards to open positions on the housing authority and the library trustees. Hi, Kathy.
Hi. How's everybody?
I'm great. How are you?
Thank you. Okay, so we had a resignation on the library trustees, which has a temporary appointment right now made by the Board of Selectmen. That term expires, that appointment expires until this election. So we could put the library trustee position to fill the vacancy for remainder of the term.
For that?
For the remainder of a term, okay? And that will expire in 2020, okay? And then the housing authority is a tricky one. We've been back and forth, I think Lorraine and I both have been back and forth with town council about six months ago. So the Department of Housing and Development has, the rules aren't in place. We had two resignations on the housing authority. We have four elected positions. The new rules are going to call for three elected positions, and then one tenant appointment, okay? But we have two vacancies with temporary appointments by the Board of Selectmen right now that expire in May. So town council recommended that we put the position that expires in 2020 on the ballot this year and leave the other one as a temporary appointment until the Department of Housing and Development gets the rules and figures out when they're going to do their tenant appointment. So that's all, just the two positions to go on the ballot for remainder of term to fill a vacancy.
So the housing authority hasn't definitively changed the rules for it to be three?
Department of Housing and Development on the state level has not determined when the tenant appointment is going to be, but we know we have two vacancies. The new rules are supposed to have three elected, and we got to fill that third position, so.
All right, so that new rule is in effect?
It's not yet. Not yet.
Okay.
So...
Otherwise, you'd have to elect two, and then...
Exactly. Exactly. It's very confusing, yeah. It's confusing. But right now, we have two temporary appointments. I mean, you can keep doing that until the rules come out. You don't have to put this position on the ballot to fill the remainder of the term for the housing authority. You know, you can wait and do another appointment after the election.
What does the housing authority want?
Um, yes, she, no, yeah.
Yeah.
And what did you suggest they give for the library one? So someone's going to fill this term and put that one out as well?
So, yes, yes. So that term expires in 2020, and it was a resignation of Karen back in, after the special election. And they have, you have a temporary appointment now. I forget her name. That's terrible.
Nancy Versekis.
Oh, Nancy, yes, and I know Nancy. And, yeah, you can put that one in, expires in 2020 as well. So it's your decision. But I just wanted to find out yes or no, so I can get the ballot lined up, and all the nomination papers are going out soon, so I can have these nomination papers ready as well.
Just out of curiosity, if you put both the housing authorities on the ballot, because technically, that's the way it is right now, and then they change the rules, do they, what happens?
Well, we have, well, the rule, you mean if...
If they change the...
To not have that, that...
Right.
To just, to go with, for the four again?
If you put four, because the...
Well, we don't, we don't, we're not going to put four elected on. We're just going to fill in that, because we have two vacancies. Right now, we have two temporary appointments and two elected.
Right.
So they're calling for three elected and one tenant appointment. So we have one position open to go on a ballot and still leave that tenant position as a temporary appointment for now by the Board of Selectmen. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think what Karen's asking, if we did elect two, and then they changed to three, how do you get down to three?
We're only electing one.
If we did.
If we do.
Right, because the rule hasn't changed yet.
Right, we don't put anybody, we don't put that fourth position on the ballot. We were told not to do that. That was two years ago, yeah.
It's unclear what happened. If you elected both positions, and then the rules were promulgated saying one of them has to be appointed as a tenant, we don't know. We don't have any guidelines as to whether you would have to remove somebody, or they would serve until the end of the term, and then it would take place. That's kind of the kind of room we're facing.
That's why we did temporary appointments.
And the other two positions, when are their terms up?
It's every five years. So one's 2020, one's 18. So 19 and 21?
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions for Kathy? Right. Motion?
Did you guys put it on the ballot? Anyone have any comments as to why we wouldn't?
No.
No.
I'd go with the recommendation.
Motion to place the positions of housing authority to fill a vacancy for the remainder of the term, and library trustee to fill a vacancy for the term to the annual town election ballot for May 19, 2018.
Second. Move by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
You have one more.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion and vote of where a town meeting location will be. So we just need to determine whether or not we thought the performing arts was adequate space, adequately set up, or do we move to the gym for annual town meeting? And I know, Jim, you reached out to Rich Bowe, the moderator. What was his feeling?
Yeah, his feeling really was depending upon the size of the meeting. A big meeting should be held in the gym. If we think it's going to be a small meeting, he thinks it could be either place. He really didn't have a preference, just that if we anticipated a big crowd, the gym is going to be better.
Yeah. Well, we'll have the senior feasibility study on there, right? On the warrant, that piece of it will be on there. That's going to be the draw.
Well, there's how many seats on there? 750, I think?
Seven...
28.
Performing arts center or in the gym?
Yeah, in the performing arts.
Seven 25, seven 50s.
Well, we had a meeting above that infrequently.
Override, yeah. It's overrides.
So we had the override that would probably do that. So you could do it at either spot. I mean, there's pluses and minuses in both. I think the first time, there were a few kinks we worked out. The second time, in terms of spacing or whatever.
Yeah, I think a lot of the cases...
But you can hear better there. It's more comfortable in the auditorium. But getting to the mic was, I think, was an issue to some people, that you had to get walked down the aisle.
We had a lot of mics, though. I think a lot of people thought their mics weren't working. It takes a minute, not even a minute, it takes seconds, because I asked Emily, the technical director over there, and she goes, "They were all working." It's just that you have to give it a minute.
Well, I think we'll probably have, we're going to go there, if we do end up there, we're going to have to do a little preemptive training. The moderator's going to have to give some training with regards to how the mics work, just so it runs a little smoother, so they know what to anticipate where they are. I personally think the setup needs to be reviewed.
Oh, it was horrible. It was too tight on the stage.
Yeah, we can't do that again.
We'd have to tweak that and move, although it's going to be tight in front of the stage as well for the advisory and the Board of Selectmen tables, because they're so long to fit everybody side by side. But I think it's better than being up on the stage, because I was afraid somebody was going to fall off trying to get out. I couldn't even get out if I wanted to.
It was just awkward getting to the podium to say it again.
Very awkward.
It was very awkward.
Very awkward. I agree.
What are the thoughts?
I mean, those are kind of the pros and cons that I saw.
What about you, Karen?
Yeah, I think it's more comfortable at the performing arts for people attending. I don't, I would agree that since it's not an override, it probably is capacity, but...
If it doesn't, they just, I just, I did mean to interrupt, sorry. But capacity-wise, if it doesn't, if for any reason we had more than 750 people, we would have to adjourn the meeting and reschedule.
True.
And what's the gym capacity?
1,200.
1,200, okay.
And Lorraine, are both sites temporarily reserved right now?
They're reserved.
Yeah, okay.
I just have to know, because of the sound system, if we book the gym, I need to book the sound guy for the gym, John Capalupo.
Is there anyone else in the audience that had any comment that was at the last meeting that was held there? I'm just curious. No?
Well, why don't I...
Stephen was comfortable.
Why don't I make the suggestion that we try it one more time there and see if we can work out some of the kinks? And it's not, I don't think we're going to have a capacity issue, and then we can decide from there if we're going to live more than one shift.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we, you know, move a motion, do we?
Yeah.
Motion to hold annual town meeting on April 9, 2018, at the Situate Center for Performing Arts.
Second. Move by Ms. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, thank you. Welcome. Just wait till Sean. Just give a moment for Sean to get up here.
You look like you broke out again.
For Mr. Vignani. I didn't see the action. Hi, Sean.
Hi, sorry I'm late.
Yep. So next on the agenda is a discussion and vote for an outdoor entertainment permit. Susanna Adams from the Situate Education Foundation.
Good evening.
Hello.
How are you? Great, how are you?
Good. I'm Susanna.
Hi, Susanna.
This is Heather.
Hi, Heather.
Hi, I'm Heather Dillon.
So we were here in the fall. We had our kitchen tour in the fall, which was successful, and this is kind of our second annual event for the Situate Education Foundation, where we raised kind of our second big chunk of money that funds our grants. And our grants are about to be opened up for people to apply for our second annual grant season. So it's April 7th, 7 to 11, Kennedy's. Last year, we had about 200 people. We expect the same. We don't have any live music. Actually, our live music is going to be 4th and 5th grade ukulele players.
I saw that.
So, and that's one of our grants that we gave, gave out last year.
That's nice.
So, yeah. It's catered by the chef's table. This year, we're changing up our transportation. Last year, we had someone come in and ballet park. This year, we're going to park at the Knights of Columbus and shuttle people over, because parking was a bit of an issue last year. That's about it.
So you're going to transport people from the Knights down?
Yeah, because that's a tricky area, because there's not much parking there. It's a busy street. So we talked to the Knights of Columbus, we can use their lot. We talked to Situate Police. We're going to have them at Kennedy's, and we just think the best option is to use a shuttle service. Have, some people, people who are working at the event, like, you know, us, we'll get there early, we'll park at Kennedy's. All of our guests are going to park at, or most of our guests will park at Knights of Columbus, and then take the shuttle bus over. I just think that's better than, last year, we had people coming and parking, and there wasn't always enough room, and it was just a little, I think it was a little messy. I think this will be cleaner.
And I have a question for Chief. Would there, any parking on 3A? Will that be closed off by horses and things, so folks don't park along 3A?
Just park across the street. That's not a problem.
We already asked. We're using this right now.
All over his lawn.
We already passed it. And the other thing we did was, this year, we did give, send out letters to all the abutters. The town had us do that, just to let them know that we're having the event, so we've done that already. So, yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience that objects or has any comment? Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. So you said there's no live entertainment. Is there a DJ or anything? Is there any?
No, we will have a few speakers within the greenhouses, mainly for our live auction. That would probably happen about 9 o'clock that night. Otherwise, well, the ukulele players will be at 7 o'clock.
7 to 8, yeah.
7 to 8. No speakers attached to them. And then we'll have, did we have a playlist last year? We have sort of some light music in the background from an iPod, but...
And, to be honest, above the voices, you couldn't even hear that.
But that's, no live music or DJ or anything.
Are you inside or outside?
We're inside.
Inside the greenhouse, yeah?
Yeah.
And it's till 11 o'clock at night?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, and you dealt with the parking piece. Good. The only other comment that I wanted to have, and maybe Lorraine can do this, you did send out a letter to the abutters. I got, I got a letter.
Yeah.
But it didn't say what the entertainment was, and it didn't say the time.
Oh, okay.
So if somehow we can, I don't know how we, if there's like an instruction sheet, when people send a letter out that they put pertinent pieces of information on it...
We verbally talk about that, the information that's on the application, which is the time, the location.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Our fault, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, just for future, however we can get it so people are...
Yeah, we can just have some kind of, sure.
Right.
Any other questions for them? No?
No.
No? Well, thank you for all you do. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for Situate Education Foundation for fundraisers Saturday, April 7, 2018, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at Kennedy's Country Gardens located at 85 Chief Justice Cushion Highway.
Second. Move by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Congratulations.
Yeah, good luck, have fun.
Hope you raise a lot of money.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
It's great work. Next on the agenda is discussion and vote for the South Shore Votech Change of Regional Agreement. How are you this evening?
Very good.
So I know Jack, but I don't know you, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Tom Hickey. I'm the superintendent at South Shore. How are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
So I went through the agreement a little bit. Looks like there are quite a few changes.
Yes.
Some red lines, and, but if you want to give us the 30,000-foot overview as to, you know, what the changes like, the changes to the agreement, and how it impacts Situate, I think that would be really helpful.
Certainly. The school district was fortunate to receive an efficiency and regionalization grant from the state in 2017, which allowed us to fund some consulting expenses to take a look at our regional agreement. South Shore Regional School District's regional agreement was last amended in 1983, so it's certainly not something that happens all the time. We took the opportunity to look at the entire agreement, and as we had a series of meetings with a planning subcommittee and then the full school committee, we noted a series of changes. I would characterize them at 30,000 feet as not being major. The most important parts of a regional agreement for any of our member towns would include things like governance, where there would be no changes. The way in which we assess our towns, at most, we're trying to make things a little more detailed. When we supply our communities with information about our assessments, we break down the assessment in terms of operating costs, capital, debt, and transportation. So, we wanted the regional agreement to reflect that. So, you will find language changes in those areas. We needed to note the obvious fact that the education reform law of 1993 was not referenced in the 1983 amended agreement. So, we made some obvious changes there incorporating the statutory method for how, how the school is funded and where we're getting the, the state aid. A few other, a few other smaller concrete items. There's a section of the agreement that says that the school is located in Hanover or would be located in Hanover. So, we're amending that to say that the school at some point in the future could be located anywhere in our eight, in our eight-member district. We made a few adjustments relative to amending the agreement and withdrawing from the district. When the district was formed in 1960, there were six communities, Situate being one of the six. And language was written that essentially said it would require unanimous vote to change this agreement. It would require unanimous vote in order to have a town withdraw. We, we require a two-thirds vote at our school committee level to pass an annual budget. And so, our committee felt that a two-thirds threshold would be a little more flexible in order, were there ever an interest on the part of citizens by petition or through town meeting to, to make changes or to have communities withdraw. I, I'm happy to say, as I said at the beginning, that I, we didn't find that the, the bones of the agreement were, were, were poor and, and needing any major, major adjustments. Where there was vague language, we attempted to clarify it. So, if it refers to things like years, we want to clarify fiscal year and calendar year. Tighten up language where we think it's, it's necessary.
Can I just jump in, Tom, if we went the other way? So, it was six, now it's eight. What if another town wanted to join in with the same rules apply?
That's a great question. If we had another town seeking to join now, it would be, the existing agreement is in effect until it is amended. So, we would need to secure, in order to secure these changes, this, these changes are going in front of all eight of our communities, we would have to get a unanimous vote of all eight of our communities. Following that, this would then be sent to the Commissioner of Education, who has the final, who'd have the final say.
Unanimous vote from all eight communities? So, on town meeting, it has to be a unanimous vote?
Eight, forgive me. It's, it can be by majority vote at a respective town meeting, but all eight communities would have to vote in the affirmative.
Okay.
So, that is the highest of high bars, absolutely.
So, the reference, okay. Just wanted to be...
So, we, yes, we, we need all eight communities to say yes, whatever the margin is, as long as the majority.
I've got you.
I could certainly go down to 20,000 or 10,000, but I, I would say essentially, we, I, I could certainly, if you don't have documents, I could, through the town administrator, make them available to you certainly, showing the various...
No, we have, yeah, we have everything that's redlined, added. We do. Yeah, thank you.
So, have you gone to any other town?
Well, no, we will, the, the, the bulk of the work will be this, will be for this spring. We did go to Whitman. They had a special town meeting in December and they, they voted the, they voted the changes in.
What were some of the, the topics that people, other people are bringing up regarding changes in the contract?
One of the areas that, at least I, I bring up to get into the weeds a little bit has to do with debt. So, there are a couple of, there are some, there's a statute on the books relative to how does a regional school district incur debt? And it's, it's refer, we're, we're trying to make it clear in our agreement. So, Chapter 71, Section 16D talks about a few areas. One is a unanimous, once again, a unanimous vote at respective, all eight of our communities saying yes. There is a special provision in this law, which Jack has heard me talk about on many occasions, which is a very poorly written section of the law that I would never advise us using, which essentially says that a regional vocational school district could incur debt with a two-thirds vote of its communities, provided that any community in the minority who dissents wouldn't have to pay the debt. No regional vocational school district that I am aware of has ever actually availed themselves of that paragraph, as I can only imagine what kind of inter-district problems that would cause. So, that provision, poorly written, probably at a statutory, at a state level, should be stricken. But the third option for a regional district incurring debt is a district-wide ballot. And that essentially, the law spells out, would allow the regional school committee to vote to incur debt and invoke Section 16N of Chapter 71. This would, at the district's expense, call for a district-wide ballot. So, in all eight of our communities, it would be a, a local election with a ballot question and it would be based on an aggregate vote. It would not be a vote per town. It would be an aggregate vote. So, folks that might be familiar with Cape Tech and Harwich, they had, they had a, a vote for a new school. They used that provision in, in order to do that. So, given, given that, two of the three provisions that I mentioned are, are already a matter of law. That odd second paragraph I mentioned, that has to be expressly added to the agreement. So, we're going to add that to the agreement. My personal hope is that, you know, they would, they would clarify that a little bit more. But those, those are just some examples of trying to, especially on the financial side, to explain where those changes are, I think are important. But for the 16N or 16D Paragraph 1, those are, those are available by statute.
Any changes in how you accept students to the school by community?
There is, we have a, we have a, no. Short answer is no. Longer answer is we have a separate admissions policy that is approved by the state. That is a, so if we were going to ever amend our admissions policy, it would be a matter for the regional school committee, followed by approval from the Department of Education. This agreement does not change our admissions policy.
And you're here tonight for us to vote to put on a town warrant?
Yes.
Not necessarily for us to vote and approve it?
No.
Does it have to be a two-step process? Do we have to approve it as well or?
Well, you'll give your opinion when you vote for the articles for the town meeting, if you support it or you don't.
Or don't.
And of course, be more than happy to come back as you work through that process later in the winter.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just the first time taking a look at it. There's a lot of information here and a lot of red lines and blue lines to dig through and figure out.
Absolutely. We'll be back in another 40 years. I don't mind taking a couple extra months here, though. If we need to, if we need to come back to do a slower walkthrough. But tonight, your, your willingness to put it on the warrant would be, would be great.
What do you guys think?
I mean, the, the quick look, there are a lot of changes that were obviously necessary and I did appreciate the attempt for gender-neutral language. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
But yeah, I think we need to look at it. I, I don't...
It looks like it's going to go from a 17-page document to about a four-page document.
When we get rid of the blue strike-through, you'll be very happy to see a much leaner, meaner document, yes.
As soon as I find the motion, I'll make it.
Oh, would you like me to?
Go ahead.
Request, oh, wait. Nope, I'm not there.
Okay. Move to reopen the warrant for April 9th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting to allow the warrant article requesting an amendment of the South Shore Regional Vocational School Regional Agreement.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Mr. Harris. Any other questions? And who should we reach out for our questions? To you or?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we just place that on the warrant?
So, we just open it up?
Oh, we open the warrant. Oh, now we can place it on the warrant.
Yeah, and we put it on, yeah. Now, move to close the warrant for April 19th, April 9th Annual Town Meeting.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of work.
Lot of work.
Okay. So, is Sean or Kevin here? Sean, are you coming up? Next is a discussion and vote for the extension of the intermunicipal agreement with South Shore Recycling. Hi, Sean.
Good evening, Ms. Page.
How are you?
Hey, Sean. As you stated, this is for renewal with the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. As a supervisor at the transfer station, we've been involved with this intermunicipal group. 15 other towns surrounding us are involved. And we meet approximately every six weeks. We usually have a speaker either from a vendor or from DEP to give us an update on some regulations that may be changing. And the advantage of meeting in the group is with higher quantities, we get lower prices if we stick with the same vendor. So, we see a lot of the pricing come down on the recyclables, the processing, the hauling, things like that. They're actually in the middle of helping us trying to get over the glass crisis that's occurring right now. I think they handle most of New England has ceased operations. And DEP has a waste ban on that that does not allow you to throw it out.
Glass?
Glass, correct. It has to be recycled. There were opportunities to look for waivers from DEP, but the vendors that handle the waste need to accept it. We reached out to CMA, which is where our solid waste goes. They refuse to handle the glass at this time because they'll melt it down. Now, they have a byproduct they need to get rid of. So, right now, DEP hasn't made a decision on what to do. So, I'm just stockpiling it right now.
Just say, what are you doing with it?
Yeah, I've created a bin off in the corner away from the residence. And we have a smaller bin that the residents can put it in. And then we can move it by machine throughout the day as the bin fills up to the back corner.
And what's DEP? What's the word that they have? Like, their timing? What are they thinking?
They haven't given anything. They're looking for alternative uses. I believe they had a vendor come down last week. I haven't heard the results of the meeting, to use it as a roadway base, as a gravel, grinding the glass up. So, they're talking with Situate as well as the 14 other towns to see if anybody would be interested in hosting a grinding machine to come to town. The other towns would all come together. Of course, we'd have a savings, but they're looking at a two-acre piece of land to operate this on. And I'm not sure what other type of permits would come with that, in terms of noise and things like that and maybe other things. But it's a collaborative effort. They're trying to find a solution to this. We'll see if DEP lifts it, but I don't know if that's going to change things right now. If somebody else will jump on the bagwagon, I don't see an opportunity. It's, it's the second product, how to reuse the glass.
Sean, have we ever gone to Franklin with it?
That's who closed.
All right.
That's where it was being hauled. And a lot of the local vendors are using the same capital paper to handle the co-mingles, the glass. And they were the first ones to alert it that it was coming.
Right.
And then, two days later, that was it.
Would it help if we separated it by color? I don't think we ever did, did we?
No, we haven't. Right now, they, they don't want any glass.
Right.
Period.
Right.
Yeah, every time we make a change at the transfer station, it's not that we want to make it. It's, it's at the vendor's request.
That's right.
Take your plastic bags out. It's jamming up the separating equipment. Remove the glass because we have to sort it. So, every time we make those steps, it's at the request of the vendors who are handling it after it leaves the transfer station, not that we want to make it more difficult.
No, no, but I know Cohasset used to separate by color.
Yeah, and now they're doing the same thing.
Right.
They're putting it in a, in a dumpster and hanging on to it until they find a solution for this. Yeah, they're also a member of the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. Lot of good information. You get to talk to the other towns, find out what they're paying as well. Making sure the vendor's treating everybody.
Do you collaborate on contracts at all?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, even outside. We don't, all use the same. We happen to have Go Green for our debris. Some of the towns don't and they will collaborate and bring in a grinder. And everybody can bring their brush on that. But they set Organized Household Hazards Waste Day. So, that's 15 or 12 events a year. And we're allowed to go to other towns, even if you happen to miss Situates because we're part of this group. You can go to Hingham's when they have theirs or Plymouth's or, there's 15 towns involved. So, it's an advantage, too. A lot of benefits to being a member.
Great. Any questions for Sean? Any additional on this? I don't see any.
No.
Do you have a motion?
Motion, uh, motion to extend the South Shore Recycling Cooperative Intermunicipal Agreement.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Cantale, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Sean, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next on the agenda, just to start going through some budgets. So, we will start with the Water, Water Enterprise Fund. And I think Stephen, you have your Harbor Master budget as well at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Waterwise. What did I say? I said water. Sorry. I meant waterways. I apologize.
Hello, Stephen.
Good evening. Small tangled up in this.
All right.
So... Nice to see you. While we get, while we get... Sean said dry.
It's perfect.
So, as we get down to the Water Enterprise Fund, number 65...
66.
66. It actually says Department 298, Harbor Master first. So, do you want to go through that first?
Yeah.
Tell us about some of your, I mean, I know you've been very busy the past year. Just kind of go through some of your accomplishments and then some of your goals for the upcoming year, Stephen?
Yeah. One of the accomplishments we had was we installed an emergency shut-off switch down at Cole Parkway Marina, so that if there's a problem with the electric system, there's one button shuts the whole system down. It's something that we're planning for across the way over at the Maritime Center as well. We've cleaned up the electric system over there. It still needs some work. Some of the other things that we've done is we started a de-icing project. And so, we're leaving the floats in the water. Cole Parkway, the floats were taken apart and all the floats other than the fingers were moved across the harbor and dried off over at the Maritime Center this year. We installed the de-icers. Again, we had a few electrical issues over there, but the system worked great. We didn't lose any pilings. As, I don't know if you saw in the newspaper, the, in Hingham, the MBTA dock...
I don't know what happened. I missed it.
The ice picked it up.
Oh.
And they were closed for a week or two weeks.
Oh, the commuter boat?
Yes. We didn't have those issues because of the de-icing system. So, that was pretty successful. And we're still going over and we turn them on and turn them off. We only use them when we need them when the temperature dictates. I don't know if you guys realize that, but so, it, it worked on the first two weeks in January when it was so cold. Yes. So, not only does it save the floats, but then saves a lot of money having to take them in and out and then wear and tear on them. So, it's, it was quite a test. Uh, my first year in this is before we had to start prevailing rate. It cost us about $23,000 to take the floats out and about $24,000 to put them back in. And that's with any of in-house labor, seasonal employees that we keep on after the closing date to the last crane day and from the first crane day until the opening date of the marina. And that was, and then we had outside contractors, electricians, just wear and tear cranes. So, we saved quite a bit of money. We were able to leave them in the water and it, it's actually better for the floats, better for the, the system. And we're planning on rolling out the rest of this project when the pilings go in over Cole Parkway. And we're hoping to have the same success over there. One of the other things, we, we did receive the grant from Seaport for $560,000 of a $700,000 project for the piling project over at Cole Parkway Marina. We hired a consultant with myself, along with the team, Nancy Durfee, Sean McCarthy, and Paul Scott, who've been working pretty diligently. And Volusion is our consultant from GEI, which is born engineering. We have the permits from DMF, Department of Marine Fisheries. They're all for the project. We have our Army Corps of Engineer permit, which everybody said I would never get. We're waiting on the Chapter 91 DEP license and that's in process now. And conservation is approved as well. So, it's, it's moving forward.
So, you think it will start in the spring?
DEP is probably going to be the holdup. So, it'll probably be, we'll probably be on chain and stone this summer. And then October 15th, I hope to be driving piles.
Oh, okay. So, not till the fall?
The, and that, you know, as long as we get the DEP license, which takes about four to six months, barring any, any problems. We've, you know, worked on some of the old boats over at Cole Parkway, kind of trying to keep them together. That's going to be another project down the road that I'll be working on to get another grant to replace those floats. We removed the old electric shed over at the Maritime Center. We pulled the electric system out of the shed that was down low and at different tides. This last tide, the whole system was shorted out because it would have been flooded. Situate Maritime Center purchased a shed so that they can sell some of their goods out of it. And they allowed us to move our electric system up into the shed, up into the upper parking lot. And that worked out very well. Because of this last storm, we didn't have, you know, electric systems shorting out. We did go over and shut it off for a few hours during that tide and we turned it back on at the end of the tide cycle.
That was that capital project last year, right?
That was a, yes, it was a small part of it. That is still ongoing.
Okay.
We hired an electrical engineer to look at both Cole Parkway Marina Electrical and the Situate Maritime Center Electrical. And we've got the reports back. We are working with Seaport on the Cole Parkway and we'll probably be going back to Seaport to look at the Situate Maritime Center as well, see if we can get some funding from there. We trained with, we do ongoing training with the Situate Fire Department with Unit 3 with the fire pump and try to keep that operational as best we can. I did get another small grant through DMF for LED lighting. And that was for the Cole Parkway ramp and the Jericho ramp. They replaced all the lighting in the Cole Parkway parking lot with LED lighting. That's about a $13,000 grant that we received. And that was completed last year. I sent four of my assistants down to Sandwich to work with Cape and Islands Harbor Master Association to get trained with the Coast Guard on a BOSAR course. And they were down there for a week. And I think that cost us $150.
Is that boating safety, Stephen?
No, it's a BOSAR, Boating Search and Rescue.
Okay.
So, they go out and they, it's part of, half of its classroom where they teach them the courses in how to execute search and rescue patterns. And then they go out and work with them on the water.
Okay.
So, we've been doing a lot of training. We also got the morgues and regulations passed. We implemented them. We implemented them.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It was a, it was a lot of work. And they are now being administered. And we are just getting ready to send out the mooring bills and the slip bills. Last year, we received, I think ninety, ninety-nine percent of our payments were by the due date.
Oh, great.
So, when you tell people, you know, there's a hundred dollar late fee, they pay it on time. So those are just some of the accomplishments we had. Also, I was able to get the town pier flagpole replaced, and it was ready to fall over. We replaced it with a nice fiberglass flagpole that will withstand 150 mile an hour winds. If we get 150 mile an hour winds, we have more than flagpoles to worry about.
Okay. Did you want to run through some of your numbers?
Sure.
So, we have...
Is this on the major budget components, or the munis document?
The munis document.
Or if you want to go over your revenue first?
You can do the revenue first if you want, I actually have some questions on that.
Description of revenue?
Yeah.
Okay. FY seventeen is $1,248,136.67 that we brought in.
Your budget is pretty flat?
Yep.
Budget is pretty flat. We actually went, we were cut a little bit last year, and we're, this year we're going up a little bit.
That was my question, are you going to hit, you only have about $250,000 so far, are you going to hit that?
We, our money, our bills go out in March 1st, and, or, I'm sorry, February 1st, and they do on March 15th. So that's when we get all of our revenue. Otherwise, we're just getting ice. Ice and showers, and there's not a whole lot of money in that.
Anybody have any questions for Stephen in regards to his revenue lines?
Yeah, well, Karen.
Oh, I just, the pump-out program was a dramatic decrease, why is that? I mean, from what fiscal seventeen?
I think because we were paid for two years in seventeen.
Oh, right, I see. Yeah, the sixteen's nine thousand.
So, it was...
Yeah, it's timing.
It was, I believe a lot of it was timing. We weren't getting, when I first came here, we weren't getting paid for slips for the pump-up program.
Okay.
Now paying for slips.
Got it. Those are my questions. Alright, and then you've brought in a significant amount of grants and donations.
Yes.
Make sure we highlight those.
The Seaport grant was, like I said, it was $560,000. The town pier grant is closing out. We have a maintenance program so that we can use it, the last of the funding, to keep up the cranes that are down there, make any repairs to lighting or electrical systems, or pilings, or any other problems that we have down at the town pier. That's what that last $32,000 would be used for.
And when you project what your Seaport economic grant is, is that something that you've submitted for, or is that just the low, low estimate, just to be conservative? For 2019?
2019?
So it's down the bottom, so for 2018 it was $48,000, and 2019 the projected is 16? So I just didn't know if you thought that there would be fewer grants, or if that's, if that's based on any specific grant that may have been applied for?
I think it may have been something that it was applied for.
Okay. To that level? Okay. So it could go up. Any other questions for Stephen on that part? You've got a lot of different components here, Stephen.
Yeah, Stephen and I had spoken, just, you know, going forward, you know, we've mentioned it before, you know, we just have to keep in mind what we charge for slip fees versus the private marinas. So, you know, Steve will be talking with the waterways and come up with some, you know, probably some, you know, fair and modest increases over the next few years. You know, we just can't be 50% under the private marinas, you know, it's just, it's not fair.
The marinas haven't gone up since, well, in 2000, 2004, the rate, I believe, was set. And in 2007, Young's Boatyard, the rate actually went down, because that's when we bought Young's Boatyard. They were actually paying more to be over there than when we took them over. The consultant came in last year when he was doing the mooring rules and regulations, and we also, he was also charged with looking at the rates in the marinas. And he came up, and I tend to agree with him, that we should probably go up by about $30 per foot, both resident and non-resident. Whether we do it over, you know, a year, or two years, or three years, that's more of, you know, a decision for the board, and whether they even want to raise the rates at all.
And has the Waterways Committee looked at that yet?
They, they've talked about it a little here and there, but it really, there hasn't, not been a big push to really do anything. We wanted to kind of get through the mooring rules and regulations first and get people...
With that settled?
And some of the members wanted to see, you know, what could the people expect to see for the increase? Not just raise it for that only reason, because we're way behind the private marinas, but, you know, what, Steve, what do you plan on doing with it? What will that do, you know, what will that look like for the bottom line, and, you know?
And there's a lot of things that need to be done. The electric systems are, you know, have, have some issues. The building at Cole Parkway Marina is not really ADA accessible, and the bathrooms are not really ADA accessible. The showers, if you were disabled in a wheelchair, you'd roll into the shower and have to actually get changed in your chair, you know, and kind of push it. There's no way to turn around. So, one of the things on my capital plan for probably next year or the year after is to have an architect come in to look at the building to see how we can make it more ADA accessible. One of my capital items for this year is a replacement boat for Unit Three and have a proper fire boat, something that the Harbor Masters office would, you know, the Waterways Enterprise Fund would pay for the boat. The Harbor Masters office would operate the boat, maintain the boat, house the boat, take care of the boat. The Fire Department would operate the fire equipment, and they would, they would work with us. This is something I've worked with Chief Murphy on.
So that's on the capital plan?
It's on the capital plan. We, you know, I worked, I spoke with Chief Murphy, and we kind of looked at what Plymouth Harbor Master has. I actually have a photograph of the boat, if you'd like to see it. It's like a Down East style boat, and it gives us a little bit more sea, sea-keeping capability when the water gets rough, as it does out in, you know, Mass Bay. Gets a little nasty out there, and, you know, the center console boats are great, but, you know, I'm looking at more of a lobster boat style, something that, you know, can go out in a little bit rougher weather. And, you know, we could use it for dive team operations where, you know, if there was, you know, some sort of rescue, or if there... It, it just expands what we can do. We're, the Coast Guard views us as a force multiplier out there, so if there was a plane crash, if there was a ferry accident, they'll, they're looking for help. And this is going to help us take care of the assets that we have in the harbor. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of property out there. All these boats are very expensive, and there's been a lot of boat fires recently. So we really need something. I've been trying to keep the, the gas pump that we have on Unit Three operating, and it's constantly being repaired, and, you know, switches, and, you know, just, it's difficult to keep going. So it's one of the major items I put on my capital plan this year.
And that's on your capital plan?
Yes.
Talk about that when that, when we get all that in front of us, Stephen. Alright, so is there, we'll just wrap up your, your budget, the munis one, if you call it, right? This is... This is your budget?
Yes.
So, the 2018 budget was $381,000, $488,000, and the personnel services, looks like minor increase, just 390 to 614. Nothing really changed there, right?
Correct. Just, it went up a little bit.
Yep.
The purchase of services that, you know, the electric, office machines, trash, technical services, postage binding mileage, it's, that went up. And a lot of it was, trash has gone up, the electric to run the de-icers.
De-icers, that's what I thought.
We had to put something in there, we weren't sure what we needed for a figure, so we based it on if they ran for a month straight.
It went up, it doubled in the last two years, is that, Nancy, did we move anything else around, or is that...
Um, Dan, no, we didn't move anything else around. We did incorporate some extra money in fiscal eighteen for the de-icers if they came on early, because they did come in on early. He still hasn't had any baseline to have an idea, so it is definitely on the conservative side for electricity, we cut those de-icers.
Any new people?
We're, we're planning on, and I spoke to Al Bangard and Nancy about putting on security at night. Because we had security before, yes, that would be in there. And at Waterways, they brought it up, and they'd like to see security back there at night. So, I'm planning on putting security back from midnight to 8:00 AM.
So I see three employees, forty hours a week? So three, so three people?
Yeah. You need...
It's two of forty-one, three of two.
So is that for one at each marina?
No, what it is, is, it actually would probably be four, because you need one person inside. You don't really want people out on a boat if there was ever a call or something, and they had to go out. You don't want people out alone, obviously, after you saw what happened to me.
Oh, is this security?
Security, it's security so they'd be out on the dock, you know, like in the building, checking the docks, checking the marinas, checking over at the boat ramps. But if there was a call for service, you know, late at night, they'd be there.
Okay, and there's going to be a shift of three people every night?
No. We're hoping to have a shift of two people. You know, a, probably a maintenance person and an assistant harbor master, or a security person.
I mean, it doesn't add up to a ton of money, but it's... From midnight to eight in the morning?
And it's only, you know, during the season.
And that's new?
They had it years ago. And they went away from it for, for some reason, I'm not sure if they couldn't staff it. But we're going to try to go back to it.
Okay.
And again, that's part of the reason he could say to the Waterways Commission, you know, by going up on, you know, the rates. There's no rate increase in this budget, right? No, maybe, there probably isn't.
No, there's no rate increase.
Are there any other new people, or is that just it?
That's it.
The maintenance are all the same?
Yeah.
And those positions were in there, are your budgets, they just weren't filled? So I just look back, just because I didn't have a security listed, and it just wasn't filled.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Stephen?
Just one more, the cost savings for not having to remove the docks, how was that, I couldn't figure out how that was reflected in the projected budgets, or...
We weren't sure if we were going to have it out or not.
So you're going to beat your budgets?
And there's also, we have to, you know, the docks are in pretty rough shape, so some of that money may go into making repairs to the docks themselves.
Just trying to figure out the new munis.
Yes.
Right out here, a little confusing.
Myself as well.
Any other questions for Stephen?
Nope.
Well, thank you, Stephen, great job, you've been doing a lot of great work down there, and...
One of my other, do you want to know what my other capital project is?
Go without the capital.
During capital, you'll have a lot of time during capital to do that.
That's fine.
There's a lot of folks sitting and waiting.
Yep, thank you very much.
Sure. Yes, did you have a question?
Brian Kelly, Paulie Road.
Mr. Kelly.
I'm a member of the Waterways Committee with Stephen, and I just wanted to, he's not going to do this, but I'd like to recognize Stephen. He came fairly close during the deployment of the de-icers to being a mitigative disaster, electrical issues unforeseen, ridiculous cold snaps and big tide swings. And Stephen was down there at one o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, he was down there on weekends. And he really did a great job. He was single-handedly running the thing, I just wanted to recognize him.
Oh, thank you, we appreciate that. As long as he has his life jacket on when he's down there at one o'clock in the morning. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we're just going to take a few things a little bit out of order. We had some correspondence this evening, some very special correspondence from the Vice President of the United States. You know, if the Donato family would like to come forward, I see you there. Do you want to come up? And Karen's going to read it on our behalf, or on the Vice President's behalf.
On the Vice President?
Yeah, I can stand right there. Or you can come up if people want to take your picture, or whatever. So congratulations.
I'm very honored to read this on behalf of the Vice President of the United States. And it's addressed to our Chair, Ms. Curran. As the leader of the United States delegation to the 2018 Olympic Winter Games, I am proud to join the people of Situate, I'm going to get on, in honoring your community's own Ryan Donato as a member of the US Olympic Team in Pyeongchang, South Korea. Together, the members of our Olympic Team represent the strength of our nation and the destiny of American greatness at home and around the world. I join Americans everywhere in applauding these athletes and cheering them on as they reach for their dreams. On behalf of the American people, I want you to know how proud we are of your community for representing America on the world stage. Please know I'll be rooting for Ryan and rallying behind Team USA as they compete in the 23rd Olympic Winter Games in Pyeongchang. May God bless the people of Situate, may God bless our 2018 Olympic Team, and may God bless the United States of America. Sincerely, Michael J. Pence, Michael R. Pence.
So proud.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, so proud.
They enjoyed the trip, I'm sure you're all going.
Nice to meet you.
Make sure they're all safe travels. Give Ryan our best, tell him best of luck. Get us going, get us going to Situate.
Lot of work, lot of hard work.
Thanks so much, thanks for coming down.
Yeah, thank you guys.
And if you haven't voted for the Holy Baker yet, go on Facebook, vote for Ryan.
Alright, that's the fun stuff. Enjoy, safe travels.
When do you guys leave?
He leaves tomorrow morning, I leave with Patty on Monday morning, and Teddy's trying to find a spot to joke in there.
They don't want to stay for budgets? Back to finances. Nancy?
There's a, I'm here because I'm gonna be here anyways.
Um, if you want, I'm happy to do that. You can stay anyway for...
I'm loving it.
Okay. That's very nice of you, Nancy. So, why don't we take Bill, Information Technology, Department 155. Sorry, Chiefs, if you don't mind. Do you? What, Bill? Define 155, Bill. How are you this evening?
Evening. How are yourselves?
Great. So, I know you've been busy this past year. I didn't know if you wanna briefly go over, you know, some of your goals for the upcoming year?
Yeah, I'll start with my mission statement. "Leverage technology to meet the goals and needs of the town of Situat both tactically and strategically by expanding services and achieving economies of scale through network connectivity, application availability, and optimization." The upcoming year, some goals are further implementation of a new modern voice-over-IP phone system for some of the more, the smaller satellite offices, Council on Aging Recreation, Station 4, if I'm not wrong. Another goal is to continue to create and implement processes and strategies to, like a multi-layered approach, so we can keep our services available. This is continuity. And a big one, and you'll see some items in the budget on, kind of improve our overall security posture. We kind of, you know, more proactive, less reactive. And with the past year and the technologies that we implemented, actually, over the past couple of years, we really need to shore it up and, you know, the world we live in. And that world we live in is getting more mobile. So, also, that kinda tails into our, a more robust, defined mobile device management strategy. We have sixty mobile devices out there and then is also bring your own device to work and all these things. And we have employee self-service applications that everyone needs to be able to utilize. And I just noticed in the break room that Blue Cross Blue Shield, one of our providers, has an app and so on and so forth. So, we need to be able to manage these things a bit better. And...
Do you see a lot of phishing emails come into the town email system?
We do. We have a, we have a security appliance that's real-time updated, our email. So, every email that comes in goes through that appliance first to be identified, whether it's obvious spam or false, positive, negative, those kind of things. So, we manage that constantly. Yeah, we have, yeah, one, we manage about 1.4 million emails, something like that. Because everything that comes in and everything that goes out, we have to capture. Because that's the law for discovery. Protect it.
Are there any technology advances for the town, for the citizens, you know, with the Wi-Fi in the harbor that we've worked on and is it, most of the stuff in operation?
Yeah, the Wi-Fi in the harbor is operational. It's highly dependent on Comcast operations in the harbor. And it's just geography down there and the conditions.
No, I was, I meant initiatives like that. Or is all of your stuff operative for the town business?
Oh.
Is there anything that the citizens could look to find advancing that they would actually use?
Oh, the offerings for the citizen? Yeah. We have, we continue to expand that Wi-Fi footprint now. You know, if you go to the library, we have the wireless, free wireless there as, it's the same operator. So, we use kind of economies of scale to extend that there, here in Town Hall. Also, where else are we doing it? Recreation at the Old Gates Building, we're putting in wireless there. And it's all...
Will it be in the gym as well?
Uh, the gym, we'll not have wireless because the gym is not wired for that type of technology, unfortunately. There'll be, in that building, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't really have an open concept. I mean, the gym's open, but everywhere else is concrete and steel and difficult to get the signals to go through the walls, unfortunately. Though I believe the cycling room or exercise room will have wireless in it. What purpose that would be used, I don't know. But I, it's available.
Okay. Any other, I mean, your budget is level funded. Is there anything that you feel with that level funding that you think that you're not gonna be able to achieve in the upcoming year? Or do you have enough on your plate with what you're working on now?
Oh, I, yeah. We're kind of, we did a lot of work the last couple of years. And there were different vendors coming in with different needs, whether it be an HVAC system that needs to be accessed over VPN or a lighting control system. That's, you know, several of those security systems. And we've kind of put in all these services. Now, it's kind of time to kind of stop, take a look at them, make them more secure, make them more available, better documentation. This way, you're kind of in that reactive mode. You're just trying to get things to work. And now, the idea is to go back and sort of review our work and see where we could have done things differently and improve and fix things that need to be fixed.
Right.
Anybody have any questions for Bill?
Who?
Karen?
No.
Great presentation.
Pretty straightforward.
Anything else? All right, Bill?
Thank you.
Anything else for us? Nope?
Appreciate your support in the upcoming year.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great night, Bill. All right. Police, Chief, Stewart. Are you gonna handle the dispatch together with Chief Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll do you first and then?
We did that after this.
Yeah, we'll do the dispatch after you and then...
It's not really a problem. Definitely.
Okay. That sounds great. So, you had a very concise write-up, Chief.
Thank you.
I noticed it. Lieutenant Thompson had anything to do with the writing of it?
Deputy.
Deputy, Deputy Lieutenant.
We, we work together on everything that we do up there.
I know I brutalized that. Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
I was saying, we work closely on everything we do up there. So...
All right. Did you wanna just go quickly over a couple of your goals and objectives?
Yes. The...
Challenges, I think, are...
My first goal is to, for the last two years, we've been working on the accreditation process. It was, when I first mentioned the goal two years ago, I was told that that's, it's not reachable, that it's monumental, and that I should pick something else. And I insisted on staying with that because it's something that, while, yes, it would be monumental if it was myself and the deputy doing that alone, but we have several people within the department that are assisting in it. There's two processes. You first have to achieve certification. And certification consists of all of your policies, all of your rules and regulations and your procedures. And what you do is you have to make them according to the national standards, the Cali standards. So, we've been working on that for the last few years. I hope in 2018 that we achieve the certification standard. The fact that we have the new building will enable us to continue and to try to achieve full accreditation, you know, I'm hoping within a couple of years. The accreditation component to it, the full accreditation, will be much easier with the new building. We were non-compliant in the old building. So, some of those things, if, you know, fortunately, we got the building, we would have been, you know, we would have had to stop at the certification process. But it's good for the department. It shows the department squared away. You're going by the best practices and national standards. And, you know, like I said, it's, it's a lot of work. And, but, you know, we've set our sights on it and we hope to achieve it.
And your goal to achieve that is end of 2019?
Certification.
Okay.
In the year, at the fiscal year 2018. And I'm hoping within two years that we will have full accreditation.
Great.
The, one of the other things that we're working on this year, we wanna develop a training program to, to ensure a successful prosecution of operating under the influence arrests. We've found that every police department struggles to get convictions on even operating under the influence of alcohol. A lot of these cases, when they go to trial, are found not guilty. Okay? We have a situation now with the legalization of marijuana in Massachusetts where the police officers, they can testify according to their training when it, when alcohol's involved. For drugs, they can't testify and they can't give testing, alcohol-related testing, to somebody who they believe is impaired on drugs, whether it's marijuana or something else. So, what we've accomplished over the last year is we have two people, two officers who have gone and become drug recognition experts. They've gone through extensive training. It's, you know, a lot of science and methodology involved in it. And right now, they're available to surrounding towns if they have a situation where they have somebody that they believe is impaired by drugs. These officers are available to go to that town and to do the testing on them. In the past, we've had to bring down DREs from Hingham or Waymouth to test on people in Situat. Well, through money from fax, we were able to get two on the ground now. And hopefully, have additional, one additional coming. There's also a new advanced roadside impairment detection. It's called ARID, which is another class, which we're trying to get more officers in. And it's, it involves more testing and the ability to testify to that testing. The problem that we have right now is if we had a serious accident where there's no alcohol involved and it was strictly drug impairment, even with the drug recognition experts, the science and methodology behind the expertise is not widely accepted in Massachusetts courts. So, I've had conversation with the district attorney. I've had conversation with the Chief Justice in charge of the district courts in Massachusetts as it relates to judicial training and getting district attorneys trained and so that they can prosecute. You can very well prosecute a case when you don't understand the science and the methods behind it. So, what we're hoping to do is have that type of training. But what we're also doing is, and in this budget, it's body cameras. We don't have a problem, like many inner cities do, where they're, you know, they have to wear body cameras. We're going to wear body cameras strictly for sobriety testing. Because that video, that picture is worth a thousand words when it goes to court. Because when you testify at court, the gentleman or the woman who was fallen over themselves at the scene, they're dressed prim and proper at court. And juries are sympathetic with that. Well, you know, having a video that you can turn around and provide to the judge or the jury and show what their condition was that night, we're hoping that this pushes our success rate. But we're also hoping that it makes it, the drug recognition testing will also be videotaped in that that helps it be accepted in courtrooms.
So, how will you manage the use of those? Is every officer going to have one and they only use it during that situation?
There will be officers, the drug recognition experts. And this has to be negotiated with the union as well. Okay, so it's, it's not a done deal, but it's headed in the right direction. We, we are going to turn around and have some cameras in certain cars. And if they suspect that there's impaired operation, whether it's alcohol or drugs, that they will then put this camera on. They will alert the person who is about to be field tested that they're, they're being videoed and audio recorded. And then they'll go through their testing. And with certain testing, then it will, once you develop probable cause on the street, they go to the police station. There will be another series of testing done in the garage because there's additional cameras in the others, perfect lighting, there's no cars going by or anything like that. And, you know, what we're hoping to do, like I said, is there are going to come situations where there could be a fatal accident. And if the person was impaired by drugs, the fact that the officers can't testify to that, that's unacceptable. I mean, we have people being stopped who have no alcohol on them at all and they can't stand up. They're falling down. They can't stay awake during the booking process. And when it goes to court, not guilty because we can't testify to it. So, I've talked to the, Tim Cruz, the Plymouth County DA, on my plan. I've talked to the Attorney for the Mass Chiefs. And it hasn't been done around here. It's done in certain parts of the country, but we're gonna try. These cameras will not be used to videotape disorder. They will not be used on July 3. They will not be used to go in somebody's house to call a disturbance or anything like that. They will be put on and turned on to document field sobriety testing. And then it will be shut off and it's not to be, they take it out of their car just for that. And that goes back in the car. That covered one of my risks and challenges as well. Because that is, it's a real issue.
Yeah.
As it gets kicked around in chiefs' meetings, there's no pretense to it. So, we're being a little proactive and we're gonna try to get ahead of it and see how it works.
Chief, do you think there's other situations where the camera would be helpful?
There could be, but you run into so many issues as to, you know, privacy issues and issues on how long you're gonna keep this material if there was no offense committed and things like that. And, you know, on a limited basis like this, we'll see just how adaptive it is if down the road we feel that this could be used in certain situations if July 3 ever got away from us again to document certain behavior that night, maybe. But, you know, we don't have a, a big problem with police relations with the community and things like that. And I just don't see a huge need for, than to memorialize and document sobriety testing at this time. So...
Do you wanna talk a little bit about the firearm range?
Yes. The, we were initially looking to put a firing range in the police station. There were rough estimates, which were coming back at 1.8 million. Obviously, that was immediately pushed to the, to the side. It turns out, some of the information we got back wasn't accurate along those lines. I think it could have been, you know, maybe 700, 750. But nonetheless, that was a huge expense, which wasn't gonna fit into our budget for the building. What we're looking into is to see if other towns around, every town is struggling to find ranges now. We go up to Moon Island. And even Moon Island is putting restrictions on when you can fire rifles and the time of night that you have to stop. So, getting in your night qualifications are difficult. And I know the residents in Squanton are complaining up and down about the amount of rifle fire at the Boston Police Range. And there's concerns that even they are gonna have to limit the amount of times that you can fire that. Well, what that means to us is we're, obviously, the range of rod and gun, we can't use. Marshfield, they can, they rod and gun, they allow you to fire, I think, up to five rounds in a rifle to shoot it. Well, the qualifications call for 30-round clip. And you've gotta meet all those qualifications. So, it's getting more and more difficult to find a location that you can do this. Well, they have, they have ranges now, which, like two trailers that you put together, 50-foot trailers, and you can shoot rifle at 85 feet in there, which is the qualification now. You can shoot all your sidearm. It comes with all the ventilation system and all that stuff. The one that we would need was the, the 85-foot version, which is just under $300,000. So, what I was hoping to do, and I've had brief conversations with some other chiefs who are suffering the same consequences, is to see if we build it, if they would come. who are suffering the same consequences, is to see if we build it, if they would come. And, you know, thereby, I take, it's probably $30,000 a year in training and I have it out back on duty. So, you know, I'm gonna see immediate changes in that. The other towns, if they come and they use it and they pay towards the maintenance and they pay towards the, you know, initial investment, then, you know, to make it more worthwhile to us. I mean, $400,000 is a, is a huge expense, obviously. But, like I say, the state continues to put, the MPTC makes up the firearms qualification and they make it up, but it's, it's like an unfunded mandate. Where are we supposed to do this?
Right. That'd be, that can be a capital expense though, right? Fire range like that has to be, right? With that amount of money.
It could.
It's not on your capital plan this year though, is it?
No, it isn't.
Okay, so this is a future request.
Basically, it's the original objective this year because we wanna research it more and we wanna come back and see just, you know, how is this affordable?
Okay.
And, you know, these things have been installed around the country, a lot around the country in the last several years, and I wanna see just what the longevity of these units as well.
Okay. Anything else that you wanted to highlight before you go into the numbers?
Just quickly, I wanna say that we have two officers working on public building and school security and they've done a tremendous job on it. We have, and they've done a lot of work on it. We have the ability from inside the police cars now to pull up on the computers all of the floor plans and mapping the school. Every school has its own plan, they've gone around and instructed at the school as it relates to their plan. And, you know, we've done town hall before, we're going to do it again, but even they've gone and met with the library. And because of recent incidents across the country, they've even gone and trained in churches, as sad as that is. But we have, we have a lot of people who've come forward and expressed concern for their congregations and, you know, who are readily available. These guys, instructors will go and inform on that.
Okay. Sean, you want to come?
Yeah, just the last couple of months, it seems like you're using the old Gates Building for some training. Is that what I see a lot of K-9?
Yes.
What a great opportunity. I mean, they probably don't have empty schools all over the place. That's, the more the better.
It's a tremendous opportunity and that's why the K-9 unit, we're fortunate enough, Officer McGlothlin is now one of the assistants in charge of the Metro Let K-9, 42 towns.
What does that mean, Mike? I know he's had a dog for a long time, what does that mean that, does he train other people?
He's big on the training, but he coordinates a lot of their operations as well.
Okay.
So it's, he's pretty humble, but it's a major accomplishment for himself. So he has worked it out with Kevin Kelly, that they can go in, the Metro Let K-9 can use the certain portions of the middle school and so they go in and they do extensive training in there. We're gonna start running some of our officers through, we do our own active shooter training. So we're gonna start running some of our officers through with them, just doing, working on, you know, specific tactics. But they, they come from all over, from 42 towns to use that because it's hard to come up with a building like that that you can use. It's much appreciated.
Dive into the numbers?
Numbers.
That sound good to you?
Most of our, our numbers are salary-related.
Yep.
Full-time salaries about 2.0, almost 2.5 million dollars. Our part-time salaries are around 66,000. Our overtime is budgeted for 245,000. And the other main expense to our, to our budgeting is fleet acquisition and maintenance and that's, runs about 185,000.
And on the first subset under Personnel Services Chief, what is the increase for special employee?
Special employees?
The special EM, I'm assuming that means employee. So we have 25,800.
Oh, right.
But in 2018, it was only 6,000.
That was, that was the, they incorporated two other items. It was the $6,000.
Is it other subjects?
Contractual.
It's the fitness background.
Fitness thing, but the, okay, yeah, the 19-8 was the fitness per the contract and the $6,000 was specialist stipends. We have a number of part-time specialists who do social services and a number of other things for us, radios and technology and things. At the end of the year, we come up with a formula to figure out what they get for a stipend that year.
Gotcha.
Are there any depositions that weren't in the budget last year? I see one vacancy.
No. We're budgeted for 35 full-time. We have one vacancy right now. I've been talking with the town administrator, I'd like to fill that vacancy sometime, probably the end of the summer. We're in the process of hiring nine part-time PIs right now. We had six 18 months ago and that's whittled down to two right now. And those two will likely be full-time probably by September. So that program, the PI program, has worked very, very well. It's a great training option and it's, it's a vetting opportunity as well.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
All the increases in the pay and a lot of it's contractual and it's 3.4 million dollars. You got 35 people, 100 new ones, rest is pretty well funded. Great. Thanks for coming on.
I don't have anything else. Do you guys have anything else for the chief?
No, I don't.
Thank you for a good budget. Oh, go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, did you, are there any gates for the additional tours for the publics? You mentioned that there's gonna be.
We're gonna get back by this, but I wanna have them before the, you know, the town meeting.
Great.
After the town meeting, we get busy after, but he starts getting busy when the weather breaks.
Yep.
So I'm hoping to use some time in March to have four or five additional tours.
I think people really appreciate that, yeah. Okay. Thank you, deputy. Now, Nancy, we're gonna do dispatch, which is otherwise known as public safety communications, right?
Right.
Okay. So I know Chief Murphy, if you want to come up or whoever else wants to come up to go over. It's a joint budget. First time, right? Can we split this apart?
I don't know if you've met, this is Barbara Doyle, she's the communication specialist.
Welcome. Did you help put the budget together? No? No? Okay. That's good to know, that we won't ask too many questions. Don't put you on the spot. Okay. Who's taking this? Chief or chief?
Yeah, I think with their, you know, goals and objectives and things like that.
Goals and objectives? Barbara, you wanna do those? Okay.
So what we're trying to do is we're just trying to do cross-training of the police and fire, so we are working together rather than doing them separately. It's been going pretty smoothly.
Yeah, is everybody cross-trained?
Pretty much. There are some that still need a little assistance, but it's a learning process and it's, it's different because when you're setting, doing fire, say for example, it's a challenge now to change some of the ways to do the police and vice versa.
Good.
We're also working on, as this process goes, is coming up with, you know, policies and procedures that will guide future communication specialists, dispatchers on the handling of everything. It's turning out to take the whole police dispatch, merging it with all those fire dispatch and coming up with a new set of policies and guidelines on how everything's gonna work. And it's, you know, Deputy Elliot and Chief Murphy and Deputy Thompson and myself consists of the steering committee.
Okay.
As is Barbara. So we meet periodically and kinda go over the progress and we're seeing good, steady progress now. There's a lot of work. There was more work than any of us in this.
Yeah. Well, like you said, folks coming in from two completely different ways of operating and merging them all at once, it's not easy. We appreciate your efforts. Anything else that you wanted to highlight with regards to that? I mean, I know that's your major focus, but is that pretty much it? Yeah, okay. So.
Where it's, where it's in, we've been focusing on a little bit, it's gonna continue out from next year, is to reassess the expenses. You know, are we, have we come up with the best ways to limit unnecessary overtime? To, you know, do we have enough staff that if that happens, if somebody's out for an extended period or in the summer, if people take a vacation time, do we have staff per diem's or full-time people to fit those needs? So, you know, what we're hoping to drive towards is get to the point where a police officer or firefighter doesn't have to sit there. This is a self-sustaining department and, you know, and the police officers and the firefighters are out of it unless there's some type of, you know, emergency or true fires or something.
Is it hard to find qualified people to do the per diem work or?
Well, what we're trying to do, Hingham has the Shrek and Dutchbury has a regional, is we're hoping to attract some of those people if they wanna work here, part-time per diem. And, you know, once you know the systems, you pretty much know the systems. We're all operating with the same records management system for the most part and the technology, technology is all the same. So it would be pretty simple to do. What we wanna do though is we train people. We don't wanna lose them either.
Right.
What type of training is there for a dispatcher? I mean, I'm thinking of the days like Steve Kent, who just, you just had to know your way around town and that's, you know, that's what worked. So, I mean, there's so much more to it now, the bar's raised. So, you know, someone off the street, I would think a young policeman, a young fireman might be good for them to sit in there and see how some of that works. I don't know, but, you know, so what do you, what do you look for?
Most of our PIs were required to work the desk.
Good.
If we rotated them through shifts all year round. You know, it was, I think it was good for them to have the opportunity to sit there, but this is a separate top and eventually probably gonna be a separate union. And it's, you know, and it should go in that direction. That's where the whole plan was to send it in that direction. As far as the training goes, it depends.
So you have basically here, right off the bat, mandated by state 911, a class called Outgo, there's licensed medical dispatching and there's the 911 dispatch itself. So we have 80 hours right off of that, just for a certain quantity come in. And then you're looking at a significant amount of hours beyond that, probably anywhere between 40 and 80 minutes minimum before you're up to speed, depending on what your background is or what your positions is on. So there's, there's a good chunk of training right off of that to get things up. And then it's just, it's also a matter of time, there's repetition. So there's some challenges there. As, as the chief had said, once you get someone in and you get them trained and they're good, you don't wanna lose them. You know, so we all wanna keep these people and retain them. And there's the local marshes, the state marshes, there are all those things that come together. So we wanna be able to keep these people.
It does help, though we have two new dispatches that go from in town. It does help, Sean, we have somebody from in town to know that itchy's corner, itchy's corner and stuff like that, just to work with people in town, know what we deal with in the coastal storms. This is a better route, knowing the town is a challenge. It does definitely help if somebody's in town.
Yes, so, so much to it. I'd probably be very impressed if I sat in for a shift or something like that. I mean, you, you hear about it and, and not, not kiddingly, I mean, they, you know, they're the doctors, I mean, they're the one, you know, I mean, they have to remain so calm and everything, tell people what to do if there could be someone in labor or something like that or, you know, it's just, a lot to it, yeah.
I'm pretty impressed when I go back and listen to certain 911 calls, that life-threatening emergencies and see how calm the dispatchers remain and glean information which assists all responding apparatus and police units and things like that. You know, it's, when, when somebody on the other side of that phone is yelling and screaming at you and you have to kind of look down to control, get the information, it's pretty impressive.
Alls we hear about is when that person does the wrong thing, you know? And then it makes, you know, it's on every news channel.
Yep.
Yep. Well, chief was good to bring the last two dispatchers in a couple of weeks ago, so that was nice, yeah. Keep acknowledging, good. Any other questions?
Chief, what was the rationale behind the percentage of overtime is pretty high?
Yes.
Is that why?
Yes.
So they did just hire two full-timers, so I rebranded that sheet today and that brought down the full-time specifically, they got to like 22,000 and the chief's over 100,000.
Yeah.
Because their overtime budget, they wanted it through this year because of having the bull and police and fire have overtime rates to cover because they haven't had a full staff. But now that they have the two new full-timers.
This will come down and be revised.
So are the two full-timers?
So the, there's one, there was one full-time vacancy and the other full-timer's taking up two of the part-time positions and then we have a part-timer for the third listed.
So what's the department gonna, so right now I'm looking at it, there's?
There'd be eight full-timers.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Part-time dispatch and then a full, and then a part-timer.
So there's seven full-timers in this budget?
There'd be, there'd be eight now.
With Barbara. Then there's gonna be another?
Yeah, so there's eight full-time communication specialists, there's one communications manager, which is Barbara, who's all, who's part of, she's half, just half communication specialist and half manager. So she is equivalent to a part-timer for the communications and then there's a part-time communication specialist.
So there's one of those.
Is that any more confusing? I don't know.
How do they, good.
I'm tired of the hard of that one.
All right, and there's no other positions that's?
No, if they bring up per diem, then we'll have to, you know.
So what is the, what is the pay go, regular salary go from 352 to, what does the number for, you told me the one.
How do the numbers change? Yes, yeah.
Yeah, when I rebranded, I came up to 532, 979 and they were in the budget for 53300. They were real close.
You told me that the overtime goes down to 42, so the full-time must go up, right?
435, 304.
435?
Yeah, 304. And they don't have.
Does the net stay the same?
That's why I suggested, because I did this this morning, so they didn't have this.
Nancy, do the net numbers stay the same?
Yeah, they're a couple hundred dollars.
Couple hundred, okay.
What?
So it still remains that this year's about $535,000.
What, the pay went up 80, $83,000 and the other one went down 60?
So what do you have, well, I'm just looking at part-time.
You said, oh, the part-time, right, so.
Yeah, so part-time goes down to?
That's 40.
20,000.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
That makes sense. And do you think eight people's the right number?
I think that'll work, yes.
You said yes? All right. Any, anything else for the police dispatch? Well, thank you. I know it's been a lot of work and we appreciate everything that you've done to make it work and it's only gonna get better.
Got it.
All right. All right, have a great night. Deputy Chief Thompson.
Sorry.
You can go with Mark too.
It's probably easier, I know, so I don't completely disrespect the poor man every time he comes in. You guys good or you wanna break before I, you wanna break?
I might just take one minute.
You wanna take five minutes?
No, just me unless you guys want to.
Um, you wanna take five minutes? Chief, you okay?
Whatever you wanna do.
Wanna do Murph and then take a five minute?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Can you do that?
That's all right.
All right, Sean.
Okay.
Chief.
Good evening. So I'll start off with, just going a couple of goals, risks and challenges and then a couple of accomplishments, if that's okay with you. One of the goals, working with the police, school emergency responses, anywhere from, you know, fire.
with the police, school emergency responses, anywhere from, you know, fires, we do those well, but, you know, we see it happens on TV, an active shooter. There's been changes in how we approach those. Basically, now, the fire service is expected to be in there within one, two, three minutes after the, after the police get in and stabilize the scene. We're going in to finding out that most people that actually do not make it through these situations is do they just bleed to death. So now the police go in to secure a area. Some can keep going out looking for the perpetrator, but they secure the main area. We go in there, stabilize them, we'll start a triage unit outside. And we'll have strike teams, which is like five ambulances come in, we'll work a social hospital, so we'll have a triage unit outside, a small triage unit inside, to basically get these people out as quickly as possible, get them to treatment, stop the bleeding, tourniquets, gas, pressure, whatever it takes to get these people out. And.
Is this your vision, or is this what we already have in place, Chief?
This is something we haven't been involved in. It's just, this is changing now. This is a whole new sort of expectation of the fire service. So we did do, I requested last year to do one training, the police were doing an active shooter training. It was actually Cushing School, so I asked if we could participate, so they could see what we do, we could see what they do, and sort of work together. We did it with a small quarter of people. We're now working with the school superintendent and his safety team. He's really concerned about trying to simplify their safety approach with us. So we're, we've had two meetings with the, the schools and the police and fire, and to try to make sure we're on the same page, so when this happens, we all work together well. And this is probably the most difficult situation you could deal with in town and anything, you know. So if this were to happen, we want to make sure all our personnel are trained, we have SOPs in place, we're on the same page with police, same page with schools, and simplify it, make it sort of base. We don't have to pull out a manual that thick. We want to make it sure it's, it's a quick, we're looking to put like a reference card, laminated card, four different scenarios, and everything can hopefully get fitted to those four scenarios. So if you have a substitute teacher, what do I do? Oh, this is, you know, A right here, I can read this in about 12 seconds and say, all right, this is what I do with my students. Trying to simplify it for them, but also the training for us to make sure that we're prepared. Also, for firefighters to have bulletproof vests to go into these scenes, so we're going to have to protect ourselves. So the police just got our new vests, so we're going to try to use some of their old vests for our paramedics, and when we go into a situation like this, we have some protection. They never wanted before, so it's a training aspect. So really to coordinate with the schools, but really the fire and police to work together and drill, and go in and do these scenarios, and make sure that we know what the police are doing, and they know what our expectations are, so we can go in and mitigate and basically, you know, stop the bleeding, get people out as quickly as possible. And how do we work that outside? And how do we, how many ambulances need? How we got to work with social hospitals? We're going to probably work with four or five hospitals and something like this, if it's a lot of incidents. So just looking at, you know, stepping that up to thinking outside the box, because, you know, we can't hide and say it's not going to happen here, you know. Hopefully it never will, but if we're prepared, if it ever does, we're going to, you know, minimize the impact to our, to our students and faculty. So that's a goal that we have. We have worked a little bit, so now we have to expand that. And we've actually, we're meeting probably on a monthly basis now with the school superintendent, his staff, the police staff. I have two offices also that are going to be working, specializing in this, along with.
Could that be a written document that will be available?
It'll be, we'll have a written SOP. We have a guideline right now to use from, that we're tweaking for our own, so.
Okay.
That we have, and to make sure our personnel are trained, how to use vest, how to approach. I mean, these paramedics go in there, they know what they're going to do. It's a little of a trust thing, trusting that we're going to be okay going in there, and seeing how the police secure an area and then move on.
Chair question, those documents will probably not be public.
Right.
Tactics and things like that, those are not public documents. And how we would respond, we don't want people to know.
Right. That makes sense.
Probably won't be public documents, depending on what the content is. But an SOP on how we respond to school shootings, yeah, not public.
Yeah. It's something we hate to talk about, we have to, we have to train. So that's, you know, it's something that's different for the fire service. It's just starting to turn that way, and they're expecting us to go in early. So we have to be prepared, we have to be trained and have the right equipment. So that's something I think we have to work on more. We just scratched the surface with the police last year, and it was a good, it was a good eye-opening for us, and also for them. We had some differences going in, and by the end of the training, we had some, some understandings of each other, that we made some adjustments to, to make it better for them and for us. So we've got to really compound on that. And we're working with the school superintendent. He has a core group of about six or seven personnel, including his principals, to ask the questions, and what do we do, and what do we call it? You know, with certain things, do you do a lockdown, do you, you know, shelter in place, you know, we have evacuation, we do it well because we do fire drills every year, and they do lockdowns all the time, but there's a lot of things in between, this gray area. So try to identify that with the schools, simplify it, and make sure both fire and police are on the same page as far as training.
All right. Jim, you're going to, you're going to be involved at some point in, great.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I know last year Tricia did come up, we do this at the school, but it's, it's a big deal. We've got to make sure we're prepared and, yeah, Jim will be involved. So we make sure he's up to speed and everything as well as you, so. But it's something that we don't want to talk about, it's hard to discuss, but if it happens, we're responsible to make sure it happens and mitigate the, yeah, problem.
The training on these is constantly evolving, as unfortunately we have more of these incidents. They debrief them, they look at what's working, what's not, and then the training gets adjusted to, to respond to those. So for Columbine, I always spent a lot of time, Columbine was all shelter in place, and when they debriefed on that, they found that some of those students might have been able to get out if they'd evacuated. So it's changed since then. It's a constant refresher course in staying up to date on what the new protocols are. So it's a lot of work for both departments.
Mm-hmm. So we work together well with the police, we work together well with the schools. So we, these meetings are ongoing, and the new superintendent is open arms to this. He wants to try to get us all on the same page, because some of these guidelines you make up, they're 10 years old, eight years old, seven years old, and, you know, you get books like that. You know, you've got to have guidelines, I understand that, but if you can simplify some things, put it down to a few pages, you know, a laminated page, have four scenarios. Listen, what do we do? We're going to go with, you know, situation B. This is what you're going to do, you're going to evacuate, you're going to run, or you're going to stay, you're going to shelter in place, whatever it is. So, you know, I think we can find four different sort of reactions to almost anything. So that's what we're trying to do, simplify that, as well as just train and get the equipment to get better.
While, while we're on that subject, do you still have, you know, guys from those departments go to the grade schools to, you know, on a regular basis?
Yeah, so we have the safe program that's there. We have kindergarten to third grade, we're up there every year.
God forbid there's a fire, you know, so they, like Bart Karen used to go and put all his stuff on, right in the classroom and stuff.
Yeah, so we still do that. And actually, Eric, Lieutenant Nolan has gone and some of those challenged kids that get really anxious, we've gone in there, just created a relationship. Listen, it's just me, Eric, and then you may come in there and just put your bunker pants on. Next time you put your jacket on, say, listen, it's still me. Then you're in full gear, and they see you, they're not, like, you're outside coming in, who's that? We're not monsters, you know what I mean? It's so, we tear that slowly towards the kids that need that sort of slow guidance. And, you know, so it's a great program. We 've worked with Kathleen Stewart, Kathleen McCarthy, on that with Lieutenant Nolan. So it's worked out well, and they've been very receptive to that. So there's a lot, there's a lot of variables, Sean, into that whole thing, you know, with different, different people. But we do the drills all the time. We also just incorporate, we have to do drills sometimes. We have a fire alarm go off, that right now, it's thunder, lightning outside. What's the risk benefit of putting people outside with no obvious fire? So we have a, a plan at the high school that the first floor will go to the gym, and the second floor goes to the cafeteria. And accountability is a big thing. And then if we have, if we have to, we have to move out, the PA system there, everybody's going to move out. But, you know, you don't want to send kids out because some kid pulls a fire alarm, or a loud and thunder and lightning, and all of a sudden, you know, it's a danger to them. So we have to think about that, and how do we handle it, and get on the same page. So. Those are some school things, you know, there's a lot there. It's obviously, it's a big issue. It's, it's our most important, important assets in town, our children, so we've got to make sure we do it. But we do, Sean, go into the schools all the time. And the safe program that we have funded by the town and by the state was talked about for many years, and we've mentioned this before, that the, the fire on Adley Road 95 basically enabled that to be funded for all the towns. And we've gone from 23 children average a year dying of fires to less than two. So it's a great program.
Too, too many.
And now we're focusing on the seniors as well. So that program out there now, that we can go out there, if a senior wants an inspection, we go out and inspect their home, and if they need smoke detectors, we replace them for your charge. We work at the Red Cross and also the state on that, so it's sort of a collaboration. But we want to make sure all our seniors are safe, and some of those smoke detectors are 25 years old. So we've got to make sure that they're working operation, operating properly for them. And so that's a program that's now called the Senior Safe Program. That's also helped out with the state.
Okay.
Just, any questions you want me to?
Nope, I mean, I think just, you know, quickly, maybe one sentence, I know you're looking to, you'll cover this probably in the capital budget, which is the station four renovation.
Yes, so we're looking at initially a renovation, and Jim and I, now we work with Bob Vogle, we're trying to look at the possibility, do we renovate or do we replace?
Okay.
And so we just had the last storm, January 4th, they had water to the bottom of the floorboards. They had six, seven inches of water in the bay. So if we had a second tide in, we probably would have had a couple of feet of water inside that station. So the engineers elevate, elevation, they did an elevation certificate, we have to come up 40 inches on the apparatus, on the apparatus bay, but the actual building itself. So we're looking at to reduce the cost, minimize engineering costs, and to basically reduce the time, turnover time, to look at the potential of getting a prefab building down there. It's basically a two-bedroom ranch with a big garage. So we're looking at, we have costs, there's a prefab builder that's doing a house now on 10th Ave, in Egypt Beach Road. We went down to Menon Friday with him, and he's going to come down to Humrock and take a look, just to see what we have. We've also got prices on, on pilings, we've gotten prices on the bay. So we're just putting these all together, whether we have to, we're trying to do a Title V test, do we need a septic down there? But in a nutshell, I think Jim and I have discussed, we went down and went to Humrock last week, that do you spend $300,000 and make it look nice with a nicer bay, or do you spend maybe $500,000 and put a new station there, elevate it and get it out of the flood zone, and much more functional? So that's what we're looking at. But right now, the Capitol's asking for $50,000 for the renovation. I know Jim was contacted last week by Jim Cantwell's office and Pat O'Connor's office, and state might have some sort of bond out there for potential buildings or assistance. And I know he mentioned that, that, you know, the Humrock station, the station in Humrock needs to be replaced, that it costs a potential $500,000. So can we get some state assistance, possibly?
Hopefully.
Yeah. So, I mean, you saw it down there tomorrow in August when we did the flag ceremony. It's, it's in tough shape.
Yep, it needs some work.
Yeah, it does. It does.
So risks and challenges for 2019, you can probably incorporate them a little bit with your budget, go over the budget view, because I think they probably all tie in together.
Yeah.
So you want to just walk in, start walking through the numbers, Chief?
Sure.
A little bit?
So most of it's level funded. The, you know, 95% personnel is my budget. So it's, you know, some of the smaller stuff, it's just some, I just request a little extra money because I don't really have an emergency management budget. As the emergency management director, basically, I have my, my pay for the emergency management, but I do have some, utilize some personnel that, that I send to classes, come to class with me, do some, do some preparations. Elena Sherry does a lot of that. I requested that, but I'll live with my budget. And that was the $2,000 for the emergency management and the salaries. And I also asked for $1,000 in the, in the supplies down the bottom. Other than that, the big thing in here is I asked for $200,000, it's under the overtime training. What that is, is trying to find ways to, ran the second ambulance 24/7 at the new station. As we told everybody, you know, that was our goal during, when we, when we proposed the building, when we designed the building, we have the ability to have a second ambulance up there. And, you know, it was my goal, Tricia's goal, and I think everybody's goal, to eventually have it up there 24/7. So Jim and I talked last week, and it's, listen, with the situation right now, my personnel, I have four vacancies. Fortunately, we have two interviews tomorrow and potentially another one in a couple of weeks. But it's been very difficult finding paramedics that are certified to come in on the civil service list.
So wait, can we stop for a minute? So you have four vacancies today?
Today.
All funded, so they're, they're funded vacancies.
So basically, yeah, so, I mean, they just left. I mean, Nicole Harris Roach just left last Saturday, her last day.
Oh, really?
Yes. So I had another one, Anthony Caputo, suddenly he moved to Florida last November. So things I didn't expect, some young people that had trained two, three, four years, all of a sudden, you know, gone to, one went to Florida, one, and I had another guy that, due to challenges, his wife, a year ago, my best paramedic, in my opinion, had to move to Arizona. 12 years in the job, fantastic teacher, fantastic medic, hate to see him lose, but, go, but it's, it's the card you get dealt with, that you have to deal with. And we also have four, I have three people injured, two out in sick leave, and one out on, injured on duty, three weeks into the academy. October 26th of 2016 was hurt. Two operations later, here we are, when finally in April, I think we're going to, his doctor's going to say yea or nay, does he work or does he not? I have, I have doubts, he's going to be a firefighter. I can carry him on my payroll, you know, so in cover form. So that's a challenge. And I have another one that, that with four days left, was released from the academy, just for demerits as far as, not for, not for any conduct, but basically evolution, practical evolution. So he's actually getting back through many phone calls and favors. He's getting back in February 23rd. So he's been working hard, he's got a great attitude. So hopefully by May 11th, he's a very good paramedic. So he's working on the second ambulance now, on the days he's working days, to get him back on the floor. So overall, I have about seven personnel, seven vacancies right now, trying to navigate that, try to get the coverage for it. So talking about second ambulance, Jim and I have, and Jim says, you know, obviously now we can't fund the whole thing at all in overtime. So the overtime, if I had to do it, I'll just give you what I have, some, some numbers here. It would cost $240,000, and I know we can't spend $220,000. There's some scenarios, some possibilities, some cost savings. And, you know, there's some cost to it. I'll just briefly go through this.
Rob, before we get into this, can you just go, can we just go back to your staffing?
Sure.
So how many, how many firefighters do we have now?
Total firefighters, 40 firefighters, four lieutenants, four captains, a deputy and chief, if we're fully staffed.
Forty funded, yeah.
So what, what is that? It says 51 on here, is that right?
Including my admin, Mary, is 51. So 40 plus eight officers is 48.
You got 50, you got 50 firefighters, but you said seven are out. Does that mean you only have 43 active of those 50?
Aside from my deputy, the chief, and my admin, it's 48 firefighters, including officers. So right now, there's seven out, and one is going back to the academy for a second time. So I have.
You have 40. So all those, all those eight people are in here?
Correct. There's, there's some vacancies there, you'll see. And like I say, I have four now. We just found out recently that Nicole was leaving, so that's going to be a vacancy as well.
So I see one vacant, two, I see two. So is that because?
That was two when we proposed the budget. We had one leave in November and one leave in February.
So Caputo and Harris, are those the other two, probably?
Correct.
So you have seven in?
Four vacancies, three out on injury, and one who has to go back to the academy.
Eight total, so you got 40 firefighters.
Instead of 48.
Instead of 48.
Correct.
Okay. And they're all in this budget?
They're all in that budget.
And is that more or less than last year? Is that?
It's the same as last year.
Same as last year.
Same as last year, so.
That's what you can run all these stations on with that amount of people?
Yep, that's, that's the number that we can run all these stations at, even with the second ambulance staff. Right now, we've been running the second ambulance during the day since April, actually, May 1st of 2016, and it's worked out very well.
So you're running the second ambulance now from nine to five?
Eight AM to 6 PM.
Eight to six.
Correct.
And that, the staff of 48 can handle all of that?
Yes. Like I said, we've been.
Now, this is your plan to get it for the rest of the?
So this is the plan to, so fortunately, what we did, I don't know if you see, what we've been doing advertising to try to recruit local talent, locally, met a woman to try to take the fighter exam, getting your CPR courses. I've known about five or six people have come up to me and said, I saw that, my son or daughter's going to get the CPR, I'm in the CPR with the EMT class, and they're going to take their fighter exam. And so hopefully, there's more out there that, so it's going to take about a year and a half for that to flush out. But we also, we're going to pull the civil service list every month going forward, because all of a sudden, if somebody gets their, their paramedic license, they go on there. So actually, we have two interviews tomorrow, and another gentleman from Cohasset, who lives in Situate now, he, he saw what we were trying to do in our recruiting, and he says, I'm taking my paramedic's license in three or four weeks. So we're trying to do a little background check on him now. And then when he actually comes up to civil service, passes his exam, and calls civil service and says, I am now a paramedic, that day, we call and try to get that list again and get him in. So hopefully, in, in a month, we'll have three, potentially three new firefighter candidates that we can, you know, as long as they pass their physical, their PAT, get them in the academy, so. But it's going to take about a year for that to flush out. So if these get hired, they'll probably be ready to go around the first of the year next year.
And this, this number is for one paramedic. How many do you need to run the ambulance? Two?
I can do it with the four. I can do it with the 48. We had two-day medics before.
To, I mean, to run it 24 hours a day?
So what you do is you're hiring to 11, all right? That's what we do now, we have 12 firefighters. If you have 48 firefighters, everybody's healthy, everybody's in, you have 48 firefighters, you hire to 11. And so if nobody's out, you don't have to hire, if one person's out, you don't have to hire, if two people are out, you have to hire for one person. So that's really some cost into this, so, and that's what I feel is the best manning and the best money spent for the town to give the service we want to give, to be able to give that second ambulance full-time. We could go to 13 personnel and have less overtime, I'm not sure.
When you say hire to 11, you mean have 11 per shift?
Per shift, correct.
And then bring one guy in on overtime?
Well, if we have 11 per shift all the time, and we have 12 per shift, we don't have to hire overtime. So the key is, as Jim and I were talking, to get the capacity, get the manpower back where it needs to be. So we have to, we can't get too anything about the injuries, hopefully they come back. There may be one, maybe two that aren't coming back. But we have four vacancies, and so we're doing everything we can to get the word out through social media, through signs, that we need, we need local talent to take this. So we have potentially three vacancies maybe filled in the next month.
So just to get back to the second ambulance going 24 hours, what do you have to change to your staff to do that? So if you had 48 full-time people right now, and you didn't have eight vacancies and injuries, could you run that 24 hours?
Yes, I could.
You could?
Yes, I could.
So it's not a matter of adding people?
One thing is.
You just need the 200 grand, because you don't have the eight people and you have to pay people overtime for it?
So if I had to run it today, Tony, without, with the people I have?
Yeah.
I would need $200,000 to run it, because I have to pay it all in overtime. But if I get the people back, that number goes down. That's why I put the tier down to 80% of the time, 70% of the time. I don't know exactly, but I'm estimating between 60% of the time roughly, if I get that filled, because if one person's out, we don't hire. Two people out, I have to hire. So there's, everybody has contractual time off, and the variable is a sick time, but the biggest variable is injured on duty and stuff like that. But I'm estimating that, you know, we can run it with 12 people per shift, 11 men minimum, and probably, you know, run this, maybe $100,000, $120,000 a year.
With an additional $120,000?
Yes. So now I've actually, if you read down below, some way we can actually maybe offset some of that cost. And it may be less, like I said, if I get everybody, we haven't been fully staffed in eight years, we haven't had 48. It's just always somebody leaving, and it takes time, but we're trying to, you know, because right now, they're taking in in July at the fire academy. So it's a ways out, that lag is back again, because there's been a lot of hiring.
So I'm still trying to understand, if we had 48 staff, or 48 working people, we would need no overtime to run the ambulance 24 hours a day?
I didn't say that, no.
That's what I, so we.
So that's the tier, I wrote down these numbers here, it's somewhere in between 40 and 80%. I'm guessing about 60% of the time, we'd have to hire overtime. So say it costs $131,000 to run this program with 48 there, maybe less, maybe more, between $100,000, $125,000. So now down below, I said, how do I offset that $125,000 to the tax base? How can I, what can I do to control that? So we've looked at, looking at Comstar, the ambulance company that bills for us, not including the people that don't have insurance, but the people that have good insurance, that we're one of the lowest billing towns around. If we went to a top 50 bundle package, which I think Jim has done in the past, is, I asked Comstar, with Situate's runs, how much money could we save the town, or how much will you bring back into the town? They said a minimum of $90,000, we went to this different type of billing, which is sort of an average of the top 50 they bill out of the state. So that is one option to try to increase revenue. It doesn't go in my budget, but it comes to the town. And secondly, mutual aid.
What's the cost to implement that?
Bundle billing?
Yeah.
Nothing?
We just changed the contract.
Well, it's going to generate, if we're using it more, it's going to generate more revenue just by using it.
Yep, so that's my second part here, Tony. I'm estimating, so now, instead of calling a mutual aid, it's cutting half our mutual aid requests during the day. We went from, I had the numbers, 170 to like 84. So we cut in half our mutual aid coming in, because we were calling Norwell, because we was busy. Norwell, Marshfield, you know, and mostly Norwell, Marshfield, and Cohasset, with their ambulance coming in here. Cohasset, half of our revenue was going to Cohasset. They said, yeah, we're running, you know, we're Situate's second ambulance service. So now, since we've gone during the day, we've cut that in half. So you're right, we do get the revenue from those ambulance transports. So now that revenue comes to us, also the service to the town is four minutes for an ambulance instead of nine, 10, 11, 12 minutes, or 15 minutes if it's coming from him or far into Marshfield. So it's better service, but it's also some of the obstacle costs. We're going to capture more revenue, ambulance revenue, from the mutual aids that, not only do we cut out from receiving, but we go out to do them more, we go out of town more, because we have a second ambulance, we capture that revenue. So I'm estimating, I think this is on the lowest, $35,000 to $40,000 there, revenue per year, and I think that's low, but, you know, we're trying to get some more data for this year, but it's an average of like around $700 a run, anywhere from $760 to $700 a run, average, because your Medicare, we got about, what, $430, something like that? And on the high end, you might get $1,200 for somebody, but on average, it's between $700 and $750 per run. So if we, you know, if we eventually get 70 more runs and do some 30 mutual aids and get 100 runs, you know, that might be $70,000. So what I'm estimating conservatively, I think $35,000 to $40,000 in captured revenue from the ambulance, but also better service. And then all of a sudden, we also have rescue two callbacks. We do this more at night now, because the second ambulance we run at night, it still runs out of Station 1, we take a guy off the ladder, take him off the engine, put him in the ambulance and try to call back to fill out spaces, because now everybody's gone, so we need, the ladder's not manned, the engine's not manned, we bring people back. It's not always accessible, especially late at night. So now we're estimating, you know, $10,000 to $12,000 that will save us also, because it used to be about $25,000, but during the day, we've almost eliminated that, need for callbacks, which has been a challenge, especially when you hire people that don't live in town, live out of town. So overall, I think if we can save between those three factors, $135,000 to $42,000 of revenue coming to the town, and we utilize that at a maximum, I think, to run this operation, it's sort of a wash, and it's much better service to the town, it's what we promised the town. If you're the person on the West End, ambulance goes back to Station 1 at 5:30 at night, and you have your heart attack at 7:00 at night, you're going to get an engine there in four minutes, but you're not going to get an ambulance for nine, 10 minutes, probably nine minutes coming from Station 1. So that's the coverage that this building gives us the ability to do, and that was what we tried to portray out there, that this is a big need. You know, EMS, we're at 65% EMS now, our call, we had 1,966 medical calls last year, it's just going to keep going up. Ambulance is really the bread and butter of our service now.
So Mark, just to get back, and not to beat this up, but it's $220,000 to run this program now with only 40 people?
If I had to hire every single shift overtime, it would be $220,000.
And if we had the eight other people, it's still $120,000?
I'm estimating that, there's still going to be some hiring, because typically, with our budget, if you have 12, and we're at 10, 10 minimum now, we, the budget, we always have enough money in that budget with overtime, that's when you get the people in a row. But now you're going to hire to 11, you have 12, you don't have a big buffer, as much a buffer as you had before. So you had a two-person buffer, but again, we haven't been fully staffed, just because of the rotation, the time it takes to get on, but I think, you know, we get close to that, 46, 47, we can run this, I'm hoping it's closer to 100, Tony, but it might be.
Well, those numbers just don't make sense to me. So we can go over that later, I just don't know how we can have eight more people available for work, and it still costs us $120,000?
Well, there's still eight people that are there, we just happen to be down right now. So, you know, I have to hire, you're going to hire a percentage of the time, no matter what, even if you had, you know, all these guys, people taking time off the same day. Some of it's, some of it's, most of it's going to be triggered by contractual time off. But now you have to come to 11. So if you're hiring, if you have 12 people here, and you have, you have on your staff, and you have 10, and you have that two-person buffer, two firefighter buffer to offset vacations, whatever it is, occasional injuries, now that went to 11, so you have a smaller buffer as far as extra personnel, before you have to hire. So there's always going to be some hiring, there's always some cost to this, but the variable is how much. When you get fully staffed to 48, I'm estimating around $100,000, $125,000 it would still cost because of the contractual time off.
But your other overtime's got to go down, right? Your regular, if you had eight more people?
Yeah.
So the other thing that I have just questioned is the revenue. So if it's $760 a run, and we're having a 16-hour shift, or 14-hour shift that we're covering, I mean, you figure they got to do one run a night?
Yeah.
That's $276,000 a year, not $34,000.
Yeah, I mean, I'm conservative there, but this was, I'm taking some of the numbers from what we've done during the day. So we're actually, we have to go through logbooks to get all this data now. So part of our other goals and accomplishments is now electronic software, which we're, you know, we've been using for about six months now. So all the data, all the analytics, all that stuff, we're going to be able to pull out, you know, by pressing buttons. But now, you know, to get a lot of this data, we had to go through three years, 9,500 runs to get a lot of this data for rescue two callbacks, for how many ambulance runs we do, actually we have some of that, but, so that's, I'm estimating conservatively, you're right, if we get, if we get 70.
I guess my point is, I think it's better than what you're painting here. I think, I know I support it, I'm pretty sure the rest of the board supports having it, running 24 hours a day. I just think the numbers are probably better than what's being.
I'm hoping they are.
Painted here, and I think maybe we can spend some time to try and figure that out a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I got these this afternoon also, so I had a chance to look at them, but we can't do it on overtime. You just can't staff it on overtime on a continuous basis, that's why it's not in the budget for next year. We need to get into these numbers, what are we seeing for mutual aid, what are the actual numbers that we're losing? What are the number of runs we're making at night? If we go to a bundled billing, just bundled without going to the top 50, what does that mean? It just, are you guys familiar with bundled billing? So you just get a better return from the insurance companies on a bundled bill than you do on a separate bill. So your collections go up a little bit, but, you know, what do those numbers look like? What are different iterations of those bills look like? There's a lot of analysis to go into this, but we just.
I think it's something that we should put a goal for this year, but maybe spend a little bit of time to see mathematically.
My point to the chief was, you basically have eight vacancies right now. We need to get you back up to staff before we look at adding stuff that we're going to do. So let's get you back to where you need to be, while we crunch the data, get the people out of the academy, get the fire department up to 48, and it's never going to be at 48, it's going to be 46, you know, injury here, a person leaving there, someone in the academy, it's always going to be a flux. But get them up to full numbers, get the department running, and then look to expand our services, because again, we just can't do this on a straight overtime basis.
Right. And the number for 200 was put in, pulling memory, just to put this on the radar.
Yeah.
If you look at my dialogue up top, the goal is, let's try to get this in service January 1st, 2019. Gives me a year to try to get a manpower up as much as we can, and to set a goal to set the service out that we told the town we would have. So, you know, it may be a little after that, but the goal is, I'm going to try to keep hiring, and try to keep everybody there, and try to get by January 1st, give me a year, to try to get the manpower up, get more data, and find out, is this $160,000, or is it $100,000, or is it $80,000? You know, but there's going to be some overtime cost, it's not going to be nothing, but there's going to be some, but hopefully it's closer to 80, and we might bring in an extra 130, 140 to offset the cost, you know? So that's where the revenue potential is. This is the cost breakdown to where we are, so obviously, if we did it all now, it's 100%, it's $220,000. If we did it sooner, it's, here's the tier down, and hopefully they're closer to 40% overtime than we are to 60 or 70.
Okay.
Great.
You did a lot of work, so we appreciate it.
A lot of work.
Yeah, there's a lot to it, but, you know.
Does anyone have any questions, Richie?
Oh, oop.
No? So just to summarize, your request is $5,000,267,000. Town administrator is $4,818,000.
That's all the $200,000?
It's the $200,000 difference for this overtime.
Basically, a couple of little things that I asked, but.
Last year's budget was $4.6 million, so, okay.
What, quick question, the overtime number at 865?
Mm-hmm.
That's, it's like 25% of your pay, is that, that's doable?
It's 19%, yeah, it's, it's. I'm going to have challenges this year because of all the vacancies. I'm trying to find out now, how much do I have left in salaries? So I have an idea, but I want to sit down with Nancy, just solidify that, and I told the, the, with the union today, I said, I have to sit down and see what my, what I have left, to see how long I can last to run the 11 during the day, you know, and I want to keep that running, because it's really, it's worked out well, and I want to keep it going, but if I can't fund it, I might have to get down to 10 and take that away.
That's this year.
That's this year, but obviously, we've never had as many vacancies as somebody's sure, just with injuries, you know, a guy getting hurt three weeks into the academy and being out a year and a half, another guy with four days left getting released, but he's getting back at it, two others injured, and now all of a sudden, I've had three people just all of a sudden, you know, sure, early in their career, one went to Arizona, one went to Florida, and one decided this is not for her. Stuff happens, so you've got to do the best you can to rehire and march on.
Sure.
But I just want to make sure that's on the radar, because this is something we've talked about, and we're going to hear it, you know.
Yep, definitely has to be figured out.
Right. So I just think if we have time, and the goal is by January 1 next year, to try to get it funded, I'll do my best to get everybody hired.
Great.
Just want to put it on the radar, so you're aware of why that $200,000 was there, and what we can do to try to reach that goal.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. You're welcome. Good night.
Good night. We're going to take a five-minute break. Sorry, Stephen, I already put one out. Five minutes will be right, Karen?
We're back.
All right, thank you. We are back, thank you. Took a little bit of a break, and we were going through budgets, and next on our agenda is Shellfish, number 295. Gentlemen, you have a nice concise budget here.
We should do more of one, if you understand the climate.
And if you could just introduce yourself as well, we know Stephen.
Good evening, my name is Michael, the mayor of Situate, Shellfish Constable, and I'm happy to be a town resident, serve my community.
Thank you very much.
So one of the, or the goal that we have with the Shellfish is to work with DMF to to open Cituah Harbor for Shellfish, to promote the pump-out program through education and utilization of the CVA pump-out boat and dock. That's to keep from people, you know, dumping into the harbor. Work on a new Shellfish project and upwell permits plans at the Harbor Master Pier. And to, uh, my goal is to get the high school science department involved in that, to hopefully maybe get some Cituah residents, high school kid interested in Shellfish propagation as a career.
That'd be great.
And to set up ongoing schedule for dredging different areas of Shellfish.
Okay. So, it looks like the salaries are pretty much the same on budget, don't see any changes-
No.
Anywhere.
Uh, I think we went, we removed something.
You went down by twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
You got rid of the support service, I think that was.
Not sure, but we didn't need it.
All right. Best project. Pretty straightforward.
How was the year? I mean, we were open, I don't remember being down as much as we have in past years.
No, I, I think, um, we got the Shellfish rules and regulations done last year, and we started laminating the Shellfish permits, and we had a Shellfish Day with the Recreation Department, where, um, did you go out?
Yep.
And Mike Beers, my assistant, went out with Maura, and they traveled people back and forth to help them get, you know, some Shellfish out of the spit.
Oh, when was that?
That was, yeah, it was-
Last May?
And originally, it was gonna be a little earlier, and it got put off due to weather. So, shocking.
We also partnered with the North South Railroad as well, they were out there the same day as well.
Okay.
The Mon, Cohogs or Steams?
The Steamers and the Cohogs.
More Steamers all year, that's good.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Stephen and?
No.
Is it Mike or Dave?
Mike.
Are you still here?
Keep up the good work.
Sorry to keep you so long, Mike. All right, and thanks for all you do.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Steve.
Okay. And last but not least, for budgets, Nancy, one thirty-five, Finance Director, Town Accountant. Nancy, thank you for offering to be last.
Always willing to be last. So, Department one thirty-five, as you flip madly through the book, there are two goals and objective pages for you, one for finance overall, which covers assessment, structure, collector, accounting, and human resources, and then one specific to the accounting department. I won't beat a dead horse to death. Most of what is on the first page will appear again as goals and objectives from those separate departments. For the accounting department itself, some of these goals, you've seen before, we either haven't finished them, or we brought them back, because there were in years that they didn't get done, and we still think they're important to be done, including increasing the financial transparency, creating the emergency management financial resource center, which is a goal for this year, and it may get done this year, if not, it'll roll over. And then, a popular annual financial report. So, we currently have our comprehensive annual financial report, which is wonderful if you wanna sit down with a, you know, cozy slippers and a nice glass of Merlot, or perhaps a hot chocolate with some marshmallows, and peruse through about a hundred and twenty pages versus financial data with some really awesome graphs and some great pictures. But, a popular financial report would be much shorter, say maybe eight to ten pages, something that you might see a realtor hand out to a prospective buyer, show, okay, these are the quick and dirty facts about the town. This is the tax rate, this is the population, stuff like that, that's of more interest to your general person on the street than lots of income statements and-
Do you do that annually?
Well, it would be done annually.
So, this, this is the first time that-
This is, I've been trying to get it off the ground for several years, and haven't done it yet, but I, it's something that I-
Sounds like a great idea, yeah.
I've seen them, they're, they're really nice, they're very informative, they're very useful, it's something I would like to, to get done. It certainly goes hand in hand with transparency, would be something that's much easier to get a grasp of what's going in a community, on, in a community, whether you're trying to move in, you just moved in, or you've been here all along, you just wanna know what's going on, and, you know, where does my dollar go? That type of thing, that you used to see a lot of, that you don't really see anymore, which is very important when you're asking people to take a dollar out of their wallet. We did, in the past month, hire two new department heads in the financing area, so we, Steve Jarzynbowski, after twenty-nine years of dedicated service, retired. We do have a new Director of Assessing, his name is Joe DeVito, who you met on your first budget night, and we have hired a new HR Director, his name is Bob Clark, and he will be starting at the end of the month, and we're really happy to have him come on board. He's a Cituah resident as well. He comes with several decades of experience, he has collective bargaining experience, MCAD, investigation, recruitment, which is something we desperately need assistance with. Hence, what the chief has said, what DPW will tell you, we have a lot of open positions, and we have a difficult time filling them. So, someone who has better, a better track record and better luck with recruitment, and all the different ways to recruit people to town and retain them, is something that we could really use right now. Going over the numbers, I'm just fast-forwarding, you tell me if you want me to slow down, speed up, or have any questions along the way.
The pace is good.
Okay. The salaries are about the same. I did request additional funds and technical services for fiscal nineteen, that was reduced during the budget review, it was because our audit contract was up. We have reached a negotiation with our current auditors, where they will hold our rate for fiscal nineteen, and then they've asked for a three thousand dollar increase in the outer years, that'll be coming before he was a contract, maybe at the next meeting. They have held their rate since fiscal eleven through fiscal nineteen, so eight years with no rate increases. And it would be a three thousand dollar a year increase after that. The rest of the budget line items are the same, so there are no other increases requested.
Great. You answered my question about the vacant position, and I just went down, so, for last year, so, good job.
We know your pain's been Munis for the past year.
We love Munis, and we're getting there.
But you're almost there, right?
We're getting there. We should, we should finish in fiscal nineteen. If it kills me, we're gonna finish in fiscal nineteen, but we're chugging along. That's what some, one of our accomplishments was just the training sessions, if anyone's ever been here, especially with employee self-service, where everyone, half of them have seen all my personal data, because my, my fake employee didn't wanna cooperate, test the fake employee didn't wanna cooperate that day. Everyone's been through either ESS one oh one, Budget one oh one, Requisition one oh one, and we do a lot of one oh one classes, and I'm usually the teacher of them.
Well, thank you, Nancy, for doing that. So, did you read, did you read the budget, I'll just read it out loud, just so folks have it. So, the two thousand nineteen budget is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred, three hundred and fifty-five, one hundred and four thousand dollars, against last year's three hundred and sixty-one, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, so, um, yep. Went down.
Nancy, just wanna take one second to say, you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
You really do.
Yes.
In getting all this stuff together, having the answers for everybody that's, that comes up before us, and, you know, keeping everything organized, A one.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nancy.
And you need to know, she sits there at every advisory meeting as well, and all the way till the end, to make sure she's there to support any department heads when they present as well.
Already established, this is my social life. It's in Richard.
At least we're nice people.
Always my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nancy, have a great night. Thanks for staying, too. Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss and vote some board and committee appointments. We need to appoint Sean McCarthy from our Engineering Department to the Street Acceptance Committee. Can't find it. What page is it?
Eighty.
Okay. Motion? Page eighty.
Move to appoint Sean McCarthy-
I know, it's fuzzy.
-to the Street Acceptance Committee for a term of one year, or until a successor's named.
So, second? Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving to a successor's name?
Yep.
Okay, and then the next thing is, we need to appoint Jim for a number of these positions, roles, that most town administrators play every year. Anything different here, Jim? It looks pretty standard, I remember doing it-
It's all the same stuff that Tricia was on.
Yeah. So, um, does anybody want to make a motion?
That's all right.
Move to appoint James Pedrow as affirmative action officer, the fair housing officer, State Ethics Commission representative, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council member for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint James Pedrow to the Cituah Harbor Cultural District Committee for a term of two years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint James Pedrow to the Public Building Commission as ex officio member for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that's it for that, right? Then, the next one is, um, we have adopted a policy as a board that the town administrator can sign contracts up to fifty thousand dollars without coming before the board. However, when we brought in a temporary interim, we reverted that back down to twenty-five. So, this request is to bring the authorization back up to fifty thousand dollars.
And that's just what-
Excuse me, go ahead.
Just what Tricia had the authority to do, something, right?
Is this, you requesting this?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any reason, I mean, I don't know the problem, but is there a reason why?
Well, I mean, in some of my past jobs, I've had all the contract authority, never went to the board, I signed them all. But, to bring it back to where Tricia was, just seems to make sense to me. We have a lot of these smaller contracts, forty, fifty thousand dollars, I can keep off the board's plate and just approve.
Get held up. I don't have an issue with it. Do you guys have any other concerns?
Nope, I don't know. Nope.
Motion?
Motion to authorize Town Administrator James Pedrow to approve all contracts up to fifty thousand dollars. The town administrator shall inform the board of all contracts approved in excess of twenty-five thousand.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Jim, just a quick question, would it be, how many of these are there? Like, would it make sense in, like, Lorraine, in the minutes, if we just knew a list of the contracts that we signed?
Well, anything over twenty-five.
I mean, anything over five thousand dollars is supposed to have a written contract, so there could be a lot of them for small little things.
Yeah. Maybe we could think about making, like, like Sean said, if it's over twenty-five or something.
Well, out of the policy, I'm supposed to inform you of any contract over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. So, maybe it just gets printed in?
Just, we'll just do a list, yeah. Just do a list.
We can assign a list where we do the upcoming meetings.
Yeah.
Once we expect for the next, we can put a list of, you know, signed contracts.
Contracts signed over twenty-five thousand.
Well, between the board meetings, yeah, I'll work it out with you.
That'd be great.
That's not hard.
Okay.
Love Nancy doing it.
Give her one more thing to do.
Yeah, she's got all that free time.
If I have any else, but I can do this in a second, sorry.
Oh, is it on this agenda? Did I? Yeah, but it's not on this one, yeah, no. Okay, so, we put back on the other business, any board and committee liaison updates, just so we can continue to update one another. I know I kind of threw it on there at last minute, so, just moving forward, if we can provide updates, and if anyone has an update from any board meetings that they, or liaisons too, that they feel we need to know, this, this is your time and opportunity.
We had a financial forecasting meeting last week, and updated the budget for the changes, um, from, from the governor's office, minor changes, increased the budget a little bit. Nancy did a, all the scenarios on that, and went a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think, still pretty conservative, and we got a couple other expenses that were more solid than the estimates we made, so, I'm gonna increase the budget a little bit.
Okay. Sean, anything?
It was brought up, it's been brought up at the, at the Board of Health, and I'm a little embarrassed, because I really don't recall this, but there was, Jim, you might be familiar with it coming from Norwell. Certain towns could have, Jennifer, I'm sure know the top of it, certain towns have a, like a pot of money, or it's through a betterment program, where a person could borrow from this fund to update their system, Title V system.
That's a betterment loan program, yep.
All right. So, it was brought to my attention because a resident had, you know, fell into that category. This, this, they're not the only one, there's a few. So, Jennifer said it would have to go to a town meeting, and I'm not doubting her, but I just bring it to the board's attention, because I didn't realize, we at one time adopted this, and then, for whatever reason, we didn't. So, it has to go through a town meeting, a vote to-
We adopted it, and then we didn't, or we adopted-
We had it, it was in place.
End of the program.
No, it was in place here in Cituah, and I don't recall.
If you adopted it, it's adopted. I don't think we have to go back and adopt it again.
Then we better have, we better have a conversation with Jennifer, because she said at one time, Cituah had it, and then, now we don't have the program. So, this, this particular resident would like to reactivate it, but it takes the town meeting vote, and it takes quite a bit of work from the Board of Health. So, I don't know if I'm making myself very clear, for those folks that don't have, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to, if they're in failure, they can go to this program, low-interest loan, and it's, it's a revolving fund, is what it is.
Town gets it at very low, at no interest, and then loans it out at a small interest rate to cover your administrative costs and keep the fund replenished.
Did they do that in Norwell?
Yes.
Okay.
We did it in Linfield, too.
Was it fairly successful, and was it, was it used?
It wasn't real big, I mean, it was used, but it wasn't a, a big program.
Right. Because what we have here in town, if, if people, you know, went in their backyard and had a Title V test done, a lot of, you know, you just did yours, but a lot of people would be in failure. So, the only time people might do something like this is when they're gonna sell. And if things change mid-stream, and they don't sell, then guess what? They're on the hook to update, you know? And there's probably a lot of people that are in failure that might not know it, and, you know, because they don't intend to sell. So, this has been kind of a discussion going on for the last few months. So, I'm glad I mentioned it to you, and you can maybe talk to Jen and see what it would take to re-implement this program, if it's possible.
Usually, if the town has adopted the statute, the town's adopting the statute.
All right, that's-
Unless they've sent in the vote, it would still be-
And I don't recall in, you know, us having that, or anybody taking advantage of that program. Do you?
Here's a, there's old debt on the books, and Tony will remember, the transfer of the six thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight, which is the Title V transfer.
Oh, yeah.
Which I think this is the septic loan program, because this is about the year when it was around.
What year?
The authorization, it went through the Clean Water Trust, which is the old MWPAT. It was issued in two thousand, but the date on it is nineteen ninety-seven, so we're in the mid-to-late nineties, there was a lot of these programs just starting up.
Okay.
If I got to guess, it was money borrowed from the MWPAT, which is now the Clean Water Trust, all that money was expended, and that's probably when it ceased to exist, they can go back and get more money for it. Because there's this debt when you retire as a fiscal nineteen, and then, there's a tiny little grant with eleven hundred dollars in it that says Title V septic, which they used to give you some money to get your program up and running, which I think is the direction of that from long ago.
Okay.
So, I, I have a feeling the program is good, they, they exhausted all the funds, and then, either because there wasn't a call, or maybe they just didn't wanna go back and-
Or the state stopped funding it.
Yeah.
Right.
The state could have stopped funding it.
That's probably more likely.
So, looking at that.
They maintain that. Is that Nancy, is that something you do, or Amanda?
When I was a treasurer collector, I, I dealt with the veterans.
The Board of Health administers the program. The treasurer's office, or to the Finance Department here, oversees the financial-
We're actually a bank.
Yeah.
And then, our collateral is the lead on the house.
Yep.
You know, it might not be real popular, but it does, you know, if it helps, if it, if it helps out, you know, a handful, that, that could be big.
So, one of the, and I just double-checked with Nancy, one of the advantages of this is, you take it out, it goes as a lien and a betterment against your house, when you sell, it goes with the house, you don't have to pay it off, so it stays with the house. So, it gives people some flexibility, if they're trying to sell, and they don't have a lot of margin in their house, this goes as a small addition to the cost of the taxes. I, Sean, I don't know if anybody's used it in Norwell recently, I know no one had taken advantage of it a while in Linfield.
Okay, if we could have a discussion with, you know, Jennifer and-
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
All right, that'd be great. Off the top of my head, that might be it, Maura, but I might think of something in another minute.
We might let you say something.
I appreciate that. Let me think.
Karen, just two quick things. The Friends of the Cituah Library has a new president, Melena Davidova, hope I said that right, and the Planning Department is meeting Thursday, they'll be talking about the Anne Vinyl development, and they also are working through the construction phasing issues for the Toll Brothers, but think that they'll be writing a decision- The Planning Board? Planning Board, a decision soon, which is big news. Planning board, a decision soon, which is big news, so, the rest, I think we've covered.
Okay. I just have one, um, the advisory board, went to the last couple of meetings, but we will be receiving a letter requesting us to take a look at adopting a remote access policy. So, um, I suggested that they, they took a vote that they would like to have remote access, and, and we have to adopt it as a board before any of the committees outside